It's fairly short reading, but I thought.
One minute.
And then bring this to the cartoons, because then we'll hand this to Randy. So bring it with you, Mark, but read it tonight. It's only like a page or two, front and back.
Benzo, if you just follow my lead, man. Keep your weight. Put a double, double glasses. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the West Melbourne City Council meeting to order July 19, 2022. If you'd stand for the pledge in a moment of silence, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Roll call, City Council, please.
Mayor Rose.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Young. Councilmember Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Dipmore.
Here.
Councilmember Frampton.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell. Councilmember Adams.
Well, it's great to have everyone here in person. Before we begin, I'd like to add one item to the agenda tonight. We'll call it Item 8E to talk about our city attorney. I believe he's accepted another job, is that correct? Okay, so we might want to talk about his replacement. So after our last action item, Action 8E, do we need a motion for that? That's a yes, I think, for this thing at home? Okay. Mr. Bentley?
Yeah.
Yes.
The way I worded that, I want to make a motion that we talk about the city attorney after our meeting tonight, at the end of it.
Thank you, Mr.
During the, at the end.
Mr. Dipmore?
We're going to talk about him or his replacement? We could talk about him if you want. I'll second the motion.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor saying aye, aye, oppose. Motion carries seven zero. Our first item of business tonight, we have some new employees. Building official Tom Ford will introduce your administrative support specialist.
Good evening, Mayor, council members.
Good evening.
Tom Forbes, City of West Melbourne Building Official. I'd like to take a minute here this evening to introduce our newest employee. She is our administrative support specialist. Her name is Lisa Pillsbury. Lisa comes to us from 11 years of tax preparation work. So she's done plenty of numbers and crunched things. She'll be dealing with mostly code enforcement, plus filling in on our front counter. So she'll be doing a little bit of everything. She has moved here into Florida in 2017, and her favorite pastime is basically vacationing with her husband, mostly cruising.
Very good. Lisa, why don't you tell us about yourself? That was very good, Tom, I'm proud of you.
Well, like you said, we moved here in 2007 to be closer to family, so.
Where'd you move from?
Originally from Oregon, but I've lived in Maine and Arizona, so I've hit all four corners.
All right.
Have three grown kids, four grandkids. Just excited to be here.
Great, welcome aboard. Next up, we have Public Works Director Mark Picorillo will introduce a new maintenance worker, Blake Kennedy.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to introduce you to Blake Kennedy, the newest member to our Public Works Team. Blake's been with us for about a month now, I mean, a week, I'm sorry.
Feels like a month.
A couple of weeks. And so we're happy to have him with us. He's on the side of maintenance for streets and drainage. So Blake's born here locally, West Melbourne, grew up here, family, and actually his grandfather worked for the city years ago. Happy to have him aboard.
Very good. Blake, is your grandfather same last name?
Uh, yes.
Okay, very good. I just, I just wondered, I don't know. I've been to Canada, if that helps, I don't know.
I have too, so.
Okay, good. Welcome aboard. I'm sure there's enough to keep you busy here. And last but not least, we have Chief of Police Rurik Wilo will introduce his new crime scene technician.
Good evening, Mayor Rose and City.
Good evening.
It's my pleasure to introduce Leah Shanley. She is our newest employee. And Mayor, she has a lot of time on the job already, she has a full week. So she knows everything about what she needs to know, and she's been very active. She's going to tell you a little bit about herself.
All right, so my name is Leah Shanley. I was born and raised in Buffalo, New York. I have come down here for as long as I can remember, because my grandparents have lived here for over 30 years, and I just want to say thank you, and I'm very excited to work for West Melbourne Police Department.
Well, since we have no crime, I don't know, what are you going to do in your spare time?
We'll see.
We hope to keep you busy somehow, but not so much with that. Welcome aboard, thank you. And last but not least, our presentation, I have a certificate of completion for EMO. Does anybody in the audience know what EMO stands for? You don't count. EMO, one of our council members, Daniel McDowell, just completed a course, Institute of Elected Municipal Officials, and he can tell us all, everything he learned, but come, it's a test?
Ten minutes.
Join me up here, and I got a little something for you.
Three minutes, that's all.
Leave it there.
So real, okay, so this institute, it has four parts, the. Institute of Elected Municipal Officials, they have four different levels of it, and you complete level one, I believe, and some of us complete level two. I think Mr. Bentley completed three and four. So there's a school in Tallahassee that does all these things, and you learn about government. So probably, probably helped teach the class, I'm sure, and says your graduate honor. So certificate of completion, June 10 through 11, 2022, in Jacksonville, Florida, presented to Councilman Daniel McDowell, City of West Melbourne. Congratulations. Everything you learned in 30 seconds or less, go ahead.
Thirty seconds or less, I will say that I did meet somebody at the league the other night that said to me, oh, yeah, you're the guy that asked all those questions. And so, and they had a great, it's a great opportunity, especially for somebody who's not that familiar with the different municipality codes and things of that sort. This has been real educational, I learned a great deal. I was talking to the city attorney earlier and asked him about one of the questions that I had learned about recently. So it's real educational, and I appreciate the opportunity, and thanks for supporting that. Thank you. And passing, that makes you feel a little bit better. Okay, thanks.
Okay, next up, we have the public hearings. We have a series of four public hearings. Our first public hearing is Comprehensive Plan Amendment for the Space Coast Town Center.
For the record, I'm Chrissy Fisher. If you give me one minute to load up the presentation, okay.
By the way, if anyone wants to address City Council during public hearings, you just raise your hand and come on, I'll call you up. For anybody else during our three minutes for the other part, just talk about anything you want. There's some speaker cards by the front door, if you fill that out and give it to the city clerk, please. Thank you.
Okay, as I've done before, I'm going to present two of the items together because it deals with the same property. So if you wanted to follow along, it's Agenda Items 5A and 5B, has to do with the Space Coast Town Center, and this is the second reading for both the ordinances related to these items. I'll let Mr. Richardson take this slide, if he'd like.
Thank you, Director Fisher. Council members, as you know, this is a public hearing, and if you've had, and a quasi-judicial item, if you've had any communications outside of a public hearing, for example, with the applicant, with the proponent or opponent of the project, now would be the time to discuss that communication, who the communication was with, and just briefly, the general substance of the communication. Also, if you've done anything like conducted a site visit to determine whether the property's suitable for the requested use, disclose that and any information material to your decision tonight, so that that could be addressed by members of the public speaking to that topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, I was just going to make a motion, but.
No, we haven't heard the public yet. Any disclosures? None, I don't see any since the last time we all disclosed. Thank you.
Okay, I'll go on. The background of the project, again, is the property that is in the Space Coast Town Center. That's a development that's on the south side of US 192, east of the St. John's Heritage Parkway, and it's in the aerial on the right-hand side, you'll see it as the property that's in the red rectangle, says subject property. That pond is only 4.65 acres, and it has been up until, you know, now the county's stormwater pond for the St. John's Heritage Parkway, and it's going to be included in the Space Coast Town Center development. So that means they have to go from the future land use that it had in the county for that pond to a suitable Parkway interchange, future land use designation, to allow it to be integrated into their master plan. We usually show these slides so that you can see the sort of before and after, that in the county, they have, you know, the community commercial, that's the slide on the left side, and then on the right side of the screen, sort of in that teal color, is what it would be, and you could see then it will be, you know, the same color as pretty much everything surrounding it. I have a little note at the bottom, because I think we talked last time about acreage, what you see in the teal color, like I said, south of US 192 and on both sides of St. John's Heritage Parkway, including this 4.65 acres, would be at 158.97 acres. On this slide, really, what I wanted to draw your attention to is the second bullet that I have at the bottom, that inclusion of the pond with a consistent designation zoning does not alter their master plan layout of internal roads and proposed offices and apartments. This is a little bit more property for them to, you know, put some future development in, but this rezoning, future land use, has nothing to do with their orientation of roads. We already talked about the master plan with the development agreement, which was at the last city council meeting. As we do with all of our comprehensive plan amendments, whether they're 4.65 acres or 50 acres or whatever the acreage, we do an analysis about the potential, if it could be built out at maximum buildout, and then really, there's not any difference between it being the county's community commercial or the city's Parkway interchange. With the rezoning request, so this is Agenda Item 5B, again, in the county, even though it was annexed in 2008, it had a county tourist use zoning, and that's why you see on the left side of the screen, the TU-2, and then on the right side of the screen, you would see that it would change to that color instead of being white, it would be the same colors of properties surrounding it. Your planning and zoning board, as your advisory board, did conduct its public hearing, and they did recommend approval of both agenda items, and like I said, this is the second time that we're coming to you with these ordinances. So for the Item 5A, what the planning and zoning board recommended was to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2022-12, and then for Agenda Item 5B, which is the rezoning, to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2022-13. These cases were advertised, we did our mailers out to surrounding property owners, and that planning and zoning board meeting was on June 8. And if I could ask the city attorney to help us read the titles of the ordinances, and I'll try to answer any questions. The applicant is in the audience, if you need to ask any questions.
Ordinance number 2022-12, an ordinance of the City of West Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan to change the future land use for parcels of land totaling 4.65 acres located on the east side of St. John's Heritage Parkway, south of US 192, and is more fully described herein, from Brevard County CC Community Commercial to City of West Melbourne PI Parkway Interchange, providing an effective date. And ordinance number 2022-13, an ordinance of the City of West Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, rezoning parcels of land totaling 4.65 acres generally located on the east side of St. John's Heritage Parkway, south of US 192, from Brevard County TU-2, transient tourist commercial, to City of West Melbourne GTWYI Gateway Interchange, providing an effective date.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, does anyone from the public wish to address City Council? Any developers, going once, twice? Thank you. We'll close the public hearing. What to wish to the council? Mr. Richardson?
I would just like to make a clarification, something that was said at the first hearing on this, and it relates to the ultimate development of the property. Under the, under this zoning category, there's a provision in the code by which if a developer adopts a master plan with a concept plan component to it, and then develops pursuant to that plan, for site plan purposes, they're able to proceed directly to final site plan, which is an administrative staff review. I believe at the last hearing, there was a question from Councilmember Frampton to the effect of, we're going to see this again in site plan on council, because we see multifamily over a certain size. The answer given at that meeting was yes, but that was without in mind that under this particular zoning category, and because of the master plan, which was approved by council at the last meeting, council actually is not going to see that site plan come back for site plan approval like you would multifamily in any other zoning district, and in the absence of a master plan. So I wanted to point that out, so there's no surprise down the road, but that is, that is the provision of the code and how it works in this particular zoning.
Won't it still come back when they try to add the falter property to it?
Oh, that will, that will be an entirely different discussion, yes, sir.
That was my question, the falter property would push it over the 200 maximum acres that, that was, that was what I brought up.
Absolutely. I just did recall there was a mention of site plan. I didn't want anyone to be surprised or disappointed or dismayed if that doesn't come before you.
Thank you. Mr. Dipmore?
Are we going to do both these at the same time, or are we just?
Separately.
Separate, all right. Let's make a motion to approve the second reading ordinance, 2022-12, amending the future land use, the 4.65 acre parcel retention pond from Brevard County Community Commercial to West Melbourne Parkway Interchange.
Thank you. Mr. Bentley? Any discussion on this? Mr. Dipmore? All right, all those in favor, say aye, aye, oppose, motion carries seven zero. And now we have 2022-13. Would anyone care to make a motion on that? Mr. Dipmore?
Make a motion to approve the second reading ordinance, 2022-13, rezoning the 4.65 acre property. I'm sorry.
Deja vu, yeah.
Yes, it is, yeah. From transient tourist, tourist commercial to gateway interchange, and with the condition that the comprehensive plan map amendment is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Bentley.
Second.
Any discussion on that one? Say none, all those in favor say aye, aye, oppose. Motion carries seven zero. All right. Two out of four, all right. Sorry to make you come all the way here, so.
For the last time.
All right, next public hearing we have is Item C, Transmittal of Comprehensive Plan Amendment for the St. John's River Water Management District Diversion Project.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, Item C, St. John's.
Agenda Items 5C and D.
Yeah, well, we can do those together.
Go ahead and do those both together, and again, have separate motions on each item. And the applicants, the St. John's River Water Management District, they're also here in the audience. This is for both the large-scale comprehensive plan map amendment and the rezoning. So on this aerial, what I wanted to point out is that, you know, the property is outlined in the red, and we have Mr. Kohler, who's a civil engineer, who will be presenting this, if you all need a little clarification on what they're ultimately going to be using the property for. But this property is on the west side of the St. John's Heritage Parkway, and unlike we were in the last case, this is on the north side of US 192. It is in the city limits. The size of the property is 59.24 acres. So we went from little four-acre property to this almost being 60 acres, and this is currently used as the county's retention pond for the St. John's Heritage Parkway. So with any new road, you need to have stormwater area, this is one of the many stormwater ponds that was for that area. So they're going to, the St. John's River Water Management District is going to use this for stormwater management area, not just sort of those green things that look like little kidneys, it'll be a little bit bigger than that ultimately. So the Agenda Item 5B, the future land use map amendment, on the left-hand side of the screen, you know, you see the yellow color of that red sort of outlined shape, and that's the property in its current designation, which is a low-density residential, but obviously, as a pond, it's not going to be used as, you know, residence, homes and whatnot. And then, you know, what I had talked to this agency about was about rezoning and changing the future land use to institutional, so that everybody knows that it is owned by agency, and it's going to be used as, as something for that agency and not for anything else in the future. So that's the gray color on the right-hand side of the screen. As I said, with any comprehensive plan map amendment, we do an analysis about the intensity. This is fictitious, but we do have to go through this for the state of Florida, that the low-density residential, it could have 296 units. With the institutional, there is a component that allows residential, that would be 15 volume units an acre, but that's not going to happen on this. So the third bullet at the bottom of the slide is what I wanted to draw your attention to, because this came up at the planning and zoning board meeting, and I wanted to let you know that I found out that there is a perpetual FDOT floodplain conservation easement over the entire site, so that prevents any filling within the floodplain, which is, you know, part of this property, and it eliminates any other development on the site, just so that you all know there is, just like we have some developments that have conservation easements on them, the whole thing is a conservation easement on this property. We conducted our comprehensive plan review per the statutes and per our codes, and talking to some of our city departments. These are some of the items, you know, that, that we list in the staff report, just so everyone's clear. But again, there's not any development proposed. Do you like me to hold, or?
No.
Keep going, okay. The 2030 comprehensive plan consistency review, we do like we do with all of the projects, and we, you know, take a look at the applicable policies, and it does support our comprehensive plan. All right, so switching now to the rezoning, Agenda Item 5D, the current zoning, you know, that fits in with what it has for the low-density residential, is a single-family residential, R-1A, and so in order to have a match for the institutional future land use, they need to have the P1, and that's the image on the right side of the screen. With the rezoning for institutional, the, the plan that they have, the concept plan is very important, so they have already gone through, you know, most of their site plan review. The image that you see in the bottom left of the screen, that's the image of those ponds, and they actually have a little bit, you know, more on that, that little bit of the image that shows the pump and shows the concrete pad, but this is going to be an unmanned, unoccupied site. And, you know, the proposed P1 zoning designation, in the staff report, we talk about how it's compatible with the existing wetland mitigation areas that surround this. So that's why I included that aerial, was to show you that you do have some sort of lighter colored green to the south, and that's some of the sort of ranchettes that exist off of BJ Lane, but, you know, pretty much everything else to the west and to the east, you have a lot of wetlands, you have a lot of wet area, which makes sense, because you're getting closer to the St. John's River. So of course, this would be compatible with that, just like we do with any case that's public. We do our notices in the Florida Today, we even mail things out, you know, even on this type of property, didn't get any, any response from, you know, anybody who owns property around it, and. And just like we did the previous case, we did take this to our planning and zoning board. That was on July 12th, and they did recommend in favor. So here are the motions that the planning and zoning board made for agenda item 5C. This is a little different than the previous item because it is what we call a large-scale comprehensive plan map amendment. It goes through a little bit different of a process with the state of Florida, so that one of the motions we need is for you all to say, staff, we can transmit this to the state. So that's that item that you see as the first bullet. And then to sort of speed things up, when it does come back from the state review, we ask that you go ahead and, and make a motion, if you're so inclined, to approve the first reading of the ordinance, which is number 2022-14. And then for the rezoning for agenda item 5D, if you're so inclined, the planning and zoning board recommended approving the first reading of ordinance 2022-15. I'll try to answer any questions, but if the city attorney could help us read the titles. And like I said, St. John's is here if you have questions.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, sir. Ordinance number 2022-14, an ordinance of the City of West Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan to provide for INST institutional land use for a 59.24 acre parcel generally located west of St. John's Heritage Parkway, approximately 2,500 feet north of US 192, SR 500, and as more fully described herein, establishing an appropriate land use for the property, providing for incorporation into the comprehensive plan, extending the goals, objectives, and policies and other land use planning requirements to the property, and providing an effective date. And ordinance number 2022-15, an ordinance of the City of West Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, rezoning a 59.24 acre parcel of land generally located west of St. John's Heritage Parkway, approximately 2,500 feet north of US 192, SR 500, and as more fully described herein, from R1A, single-family residential, to P1 institutional, providing an effective date.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Does anybody from the public wish to address city council? Do y'all want to make a presentation? I'd like to hear a little overview, if you would, just.
Mayor, if you give me a minute to load up there. Oops, sorry, Tim. I loaded up the wrong one. Sorry. Uh, oh, here it is. Okay. They have a presentation, too.
Good evening.
There. Council members, good to be before you again. You may recall I was before you two and a half years ago or so about this same project.
Could you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Sorry. I'm Richard Kohler. I work for Jones, Edmonds &amp; Associates. We're at 3910 South Washington Avenue in Titusville, Florida. As I was saying, we were before you two to three years ago about this project, where there was another parcel of land that was, that was part of the project overall, where we needed a rezoning and a comprehensive plan amendment, and, and that was successful. It was around that time that we also presented the project, explained what we were doing. We had public meetings, outreach, and went, you know, for, for the residents of the area, and got to the point where we were ready to bid the project for construction. And then some things occurred that required us to do a little bit of additional design and add to the project. I'll explain that in the presentation. So with that, it's a short presentation, but I can also answer questions, and Mark Van Heeden from the district is here, and he can also assist if needed. Just a little bit of background. Back in 2016, 2017, there was a feasibility study looking at the Indian River Lagoon and evaluating options for improvements to the wa, to water quality in the Indian River Lagoon. And in that study, a number of large-scale projects were evaluated, and their cost-effectiveness was determined, and then they were ranked. This project, the Crane Creek M1 project, was one of the highest-ranked projects in terms of, you know, a cost-effectiveness. And so the Water Management District selected it for design and construction. The idea behind the project, all of the projects we studied, is to reduce contamination discharges into the, into the Indian River Lagoon, which, as everybody knows, is a stressed water body. And so this project, similarly, is a water quality restoration project aimed at improving the Indian River Lagoon water quality. Just a little bit of background. Here's an image of the Melbourne area, and you can see in the middle of the image, the M1 canal is shown there, and it's a couple of thousand feet north of US 192. Historically, this entire area drained to the St. John's River a hundred or so years ago as agriculture was, you know, was, was developing. The canals were cut, and that had caused runoff to then start to discharge east to the Indian River Lagoon, and that's the way it's been ever since. And over time, things have built up, and the amount of discharge through the canal to the lagoon and the, and the nutrient loading to the lagoon has become significant. So the Water Management District is investing in improvements. So the basic concept here is to pump water out of the canal that currently is flowing to the Indian River Lagoon, pump it out of the canal across I-95 to the west, and then treat it on the west side in the ponds that I'll talk about, and then from there, allow it to drain west back to the St. John's River, fully treated, back to the St. John's River, thus restoring flow, the original flow patterns, and at the same time, reducing nutrient discharges to the Indian River Lagoon. The basic components of the project, on the far east of the project, right near the Melbourne Square Mall, there will be an operable weir installed in the canal. That weir will only be operated during base flow conditions, during any kind of big rain events such as hurricanes or, or large-scale storms. The weir, it's a control structure that's intended to, that's intended to, to raise up. During large storms, it'll be closed down, it'll be out of the way, so there would be absolutely no difference from the way things flow now.
Is that still a manual system?
No, it'll be, it's controlled. It is controlled by the Water Management District, and it has automation that would shut it down in the case of rising water levels. So if there was any kind of rising water levels, it closes down, and it allows the canal to be wide open. But in the lower flow conditions, it just allows the water to stage up in the lower part of the canal a little bit, so that the pump station has something to draw from. So the operable weir is the furthest thing to the east, near the Melbourne Square Mall. Then right to the east of I-95 on the canal, there's the east pump station. That is the site that, that this, that the, that the council was gracious enough to approve, our east pump station two and a half years ago. There will be a stormwater force main, which is a pipeline, that the pump station's going to pump through that pipeline to the stormwater treatment area. That is the property, that is the subject property that we're talking about. The stormwater treatment area right now is a borrow pit that was dug by Brevard County for construction of the St. John's Heritage Parkway, and serves as a floodplain compensation area for both them and for the Florida Department of Transportation. And there's an easement across that property, which prevents it from being filled, as the director of planning mentioned. That was the project that we presented two and a half years ago. From that stormwater treatment area, the water was going to flow just naturally by gravity to the west across the city of Melbourne's property that is a wetland mitigation bank that since has changed, and we are no longer discharging in that direction, thus the reason for this add-on to the project. The add-on to the project that we did over the last two years is a second pump station at the stormwater treatment area, and another pipeline that takes it further west along 192 to properties owned by the Water Management District. This is the, well, this is the east pump station that you've already approved, and so it was approved in 2019. There was a zoning change, a comp plan amendment, and site plan approval. This, and it was a little hard to probably read, but it represents the addition to the project we've made since we were before you last time. The stormwater treatment area, which you see in the top right corner of the screen, which is the subject parcel, that's within the city of West Melbourne city limits. It was originally, when the St. John's Heritage Parkway was being developed, it was taken by Brevard County, where they used it for floodplain compensation and for borrow material to build the road. The district was coordinating with them through that time, and since that time has taken ownership of that parcel. So the Water Management District now owns the stormwater treatment area property, contingent on them using it as a stormwater treatment area. So from there, we are installing a pump station, which will then take the water that we pumped from the east side of I-95 into the pond, allow it to, to run through the pond and be treated to remove the nutrients, and then the west pump station, which is at the very southeast corner of the property, would then, and it, it's a pump station very similar to the sewage pump stations that the city and many, and all other cities have. It's an underground, you know, mostly underground installation, a vault underground, all the pumps are, are down underground, so there's minimal noise.
When you say treated, what do, what do you mean? Are you taking contaminants out, or are you just, is it all natural through the lakes that you have there?
It's natural. It's a passive, it's a passive treatment.
So the, what happens to the contaminants that you gather? They just settle in the lake?
Some of it goes through settlement, some of it's, some of it's through biological action, so there's, you know, microbes and things in the water that, that convert.
So we're kind of pulling contaminated water out of Melbourne and bringing the contaminants into West Melbourne and leaving them in our lakes?
Well.
I mean, it.
It, it's a stormwater treatment pond, just like every other stormwater treatment pond that, that's on any developed property. It's, you know, and that's the way stormwater is typically.
So that's a yes.
So yes, that, that site is intended to help remove the contaminants from the stormwater before we discharge to the St. John's River. But again, it would be no different than any other stormwater ponds that are installed at any number of developments.
May, I just think we have to be careful with the terminology when we're using words like contaminants and nutrients or things like that. If you're talking about the items that we're measuring that were going into the lagoon, is that what we're talking about?
You're correct, and thank you for that clarification. They are nu, they are nutrients, nitrogen, phosphorus, suspended solids, very typical. It's not contaminants as, as in petroleum products or some other, other things. It is typical stuff that comes off of roads and, you know, just from, again, nitrogen, phosphorus, those are pretty classic stormwater, stormwater constituents. So from the pump?
We don't consider them contaminants? You say nutrients, is it?
Well, they don't.
Is it one the same as the other? It's pesticides and everything, correct? I mean, that's making, I mean, my, my off-base here, or?
I couldn't stand here and tell you if there were pesticides in the stormwater that are entering the M1 canal, but whatever is, whatever is in that canal water currently going into the Indian River Lagoon, the idea is to minimize those discharges to the lagoon and use the stormwater treatment area like every other stormwater treatment area, you know? It's a, it's a passive stormwater retention pond intended to reduce those constituents before discharge to its ultimate downfall, in this case, the St. John's River.
If I could just add, you know, think of it this way. I know it's a different scale, but, you know, e, even, for example, Space Coast Town Center and that big pond that they built, it does the same thing. You know, it gathers nutrients or the contaminants, however you want to, you know, term it. And there is sort of a system, there is a science to, you know, how that sort of filters out and gathers, you know, on the bottom of that retention area. But, you know, this just happens to be sort of a bigger scale lake, but the principle and the premise is the same, and St. John's requires that of all the developers. So it sort of makes sense that they're using the same, you know, technology and requirements that they require the private side to treat, you know, the water that's coming through their, their canal and their pump system. Did that help any? Okay.
Deputy Mary Young?
Thank you for coming back. I do remember when you were here and we were discussing this, when we were having all that flooding in the Woodland subdivision back there, and we did all that work back there, and it was, and it was talked about then, trying to put the flow back the way that it was originally before it was diverted to go into the canal. So thank you for coming back, and it's been a long time that you've been doing all this study. So that being said, in my packet, it says, and I was concerned because there is some building that would be allowed there if we changed this to, to institutional, but it says, FDOT has a floodplain compensation easement across the entire site, which present, prevents any filling within the floodplain. This was created to offset impacts and potential for any development occurring on-site. Impacts from the St. John's Heritage Parkway within the state permitting eliminates any other development of the site. So there is no way ever in the future this is ever, ever going to be built on. They're not going to sneak in a subdivision or multifamily or condos or anything on this site. It's going to be underwater.
Correct. Impossible to develop this site. It's under easement. There's no room on the site for doing that. It's owned by the Water Management District. It's part of their, you know, long-term plan for this project. It will never be developed as anything but this stormwater treatment area.
Okay. What is the floodplain designation now?
Well, there's a, it's a floodplain compensation area, and it's got, so there's a certain quantity of volume that has to be maintained to offset the impacts from the development of St. John's Heritage Parkway. So that, you know, that, that, that amount is being preserved. In addition, there's an additional amount that Brevard County has allocated over and above what DOT needs. That's also being preserved. Then there's kind of a cushion above that, still in available volume, and the district is using a very small amount of that for their project. So we are honoring all the floodplain compensation volumes with our very, very small pump station installation.
All right. And so then the, the water that will be collected in this does come from West Melbourne, as well as other sites that go into the M1 canal. As I recall, when we had the issue with this, it was the M1 canal runs along Hibiscus, which parts of that are West Melbourne, and then goes over to Evans, and in that area right there, that is all the M1 canal. Yes, it is. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I was in the right place. All right. So thank you for answering. Thank you.
Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I thought you commented that originally this was going to be this, the storage pond in Melbourne, and then it got changed to West Melbourne.
Now, let me explain that a little more carefully.
Sure.
Can you speak into the mic, because I don't think we're picking you up?
I'll explain it a little bit more carefully. So on this image, you will see that the stormwater treatment area, the original concept was to have that property, when the water entered the property into the pond, it would then overflow to the west across the, what, that green line is there for an illustrative purpose. The original idea was it would flow across the property to the west, which is a wetland mitigation bank. It is on city of Melbourne-owned land, but it's operated by a wetland mitigation bank entity, and that, that was the original plan. Now, instead of the discharge being through that wetland mitigation bank, we are pumping that water south and west, down 192, to lands much closer to the river and discharging into the marsh. And all of that land you see to the, on the left part of the screen is all owned by the St. John's River Water Management District, contiguous all the way to the river, north and south.
My second question, and I think I commented on this a few years ago when you were, someone presented last time, that the canal that runs, I guess, M1, is that the M1 canal?
Yes, that's the canal.
That, I'm representing kind of the Sheridan Road area, so anything that's immediately to the south is between Sheridan Road and the canal, you know, I have concern about. And we, at the last major hurricane, and it's been a while, so, I mean, our neighborhood has its own private lake, Lake Ashley there, and we're connected to the canal, and we receive flooding from the canal into our lake, almost flooding our homes. And so I'm worried that this is going to make it worse.
It's a, it's a valid, it's an understandable concern, but that won't be an issue because... It's an understandable concern, but that won't be an issue because this system will not be operated and the weir in the canal will not be open during any events that would lead to flooding.
Yeah, but the water will be at a higher level prior to the rain, commencement of rain.
Right.
Because you guys already have it at a higher level, right? Or you'll have it at a higher level, so we won't have... Well, you know, I know West Melbourne, in some cases, in some areas, we pump, pre-pump just because of a flooding issue. And now, you're going to be... You're going to have this canal at a higher level, and I'm worried that it's going to flood even worse into our communities.
Yeah, during any kind of a flood condition, the system will not be in operation and the weir will be down, so there won't be any impact from this system on flood levels. In addition, let me just add that we did a very comprehensive, and the district, you know, paid for a very comprehensive modeling of the stormwater system and the canal and the entire contributing basin that goes into the canal. And we were able to, you know, we were able to determine and show that even if, and this is not going to ever happen, but even with the weir up during a hundred-year event, it wouldn't raise flood elevations any higher than the current flood elevations that you have in the city. However, the district is not going to have the weir up during those situations. They can predict in advance when those kinds of storms are approaching, they're going to have the weir down so that there's absolutely no... There's no obstruction in the canal, and there will be no impact whatsoever on flood elevations in the city.
So, I hear what you're saying, but if, for example, you said you modeled it with the device up, I don't see how that's logical, that we almost got flooded because of that canal last time. Now, you're going to have a higher... If you had it up, you would have a higher water level that we're starting with, and if we had the same monorail, we would actually flood our homes. I mean, we were close. We were within inches of flooding homes.
Understood.
And that's with it completely down, not completely down now. I'm just more nervous now, because you've got more... You're starting with more water than what we started with historically. It's at a higher level.
We're very sensitive to that concern and have been from the beginning of the project, which is why when we did our analysis, we thought a reasonable approach was to look at it under a worst-case condition and see if our model indicated any increase in flood stage. I'm not saying there won't be flood stage, because you have flood stage now during those events, but our models and our engineers determined, their analysis indicated, there would not be an increase in flood stage even with the weir up. But the... I'm just saying that was...
Does that make sense to you, though?
I'm just saying that was...
I hear what you're saying, but if you have it up, it's higher water level.
It does depend on, you know, the... All the elevations involved, where the weir actually stands, where the canal tops and banks are, and...
Well, I had asked at the last, you know, two years ago, that you guys provided me some kind of evidence, your report or whatever, that shows me this information, and I never... I've never gotten it.
I think we did.
Well, I didn't. I don't remember seeing it, if I did.
I did bring back some...
Or it didn't convince me if I did see it.
You asked good questions, and I did bring back...
That was at the second reading.
I brought back some data.
Okay.
Presented it.
Yep.
Be glad to do it again, but I'll tell you, summarize what I did bring back. The question was impacts on the M-1 from changing water levels during normal system operations. So, we looked at a number of culverts that enter the canal, and what we found were, for instance, at Ashley Manor, there are two 38-by-60-inch storm pipes that enter the canal.
Right.
Storm pipe invert elevations are 16.7 feet relative to NAVD-88, call it sea level, 16 feet above sea level. That's just a relative elevation. The proposed M-1 canal normal water elevation is 13, three feet below that culvert. And that's under the proposed condition, we'd be at 13.2, whereas under existing conditions, it's at 13.6. It's actually a little bit lower. And part of that has to do with the weir, and part of it has to do with the pumping station operating at all, you know, whenever the weir is up, the pump... Don't forget, the pumps are running to pull water out of the canal west.
Well, can I ask a question? I'm sorry, because I know what happens with Melbourne Tillman, when they're getting ready for storm events, they actually do additional pumping out. Is the district set up that way, too? That they're going to do additional pumping? Mark, I don't know if you want to? Yes, please.
My name is Mark Van Hayden with St. John's River Water Management District, that's 525 Community College Parkway. So, first, to answer your question about the, you know, if you check the water up, how can there be... How can the stages be the same or less than? And the reason is because you have a bigger cross-sectional area over which the water can flow. So, the canal is now narrow, that canal portion where the weir is going to be much bigger, and so, it's a much bigger area where the water can flow over top of the weir where it is today. Now, we would not pump in advance of the storm any more than we do now, but we would in advance of the storm, several days in advance of the storm, take the weirs down, and it would be exactly the same way it is today.
Well, I'm just nervous because I faced this, and we had homes within inches of being flooded from the canal. They were flooding our land. I mean, we didn't even get to drain out to the canal. You guys were draining into our neighborhood.
Okay. So, we understand, too, it's not the Water Management District's canal, that's the county's canal.
I understand, but you're affecting it right now with what you're doing.
Right, right. So, at base level, when it's not being used for, you know, the base flow that goes into the canal, that would be checked up, but then during... In the event of any kind of hurricane, tropical storm, any kind of system like that, not only is it telemetered, but it can also be operated manually.
So, I'm just curious. I don't even know if this is a legality question. Are we allowed to block the outlet coming into our lake if it was a storm? If you're draining into us to prevent you from doing that?
Um...
Your pipe actually comes into our lake, right?
Yeah, overflow protector.
And I had put something in there to say, okay, when it floods, I don't want the canal flooding into our neighborhood. I'm fine with it obviously going the other way.
Right, so that'd be a...
I didn't know if that was legal to do, but...
Like a backflow preventer type?
Yeah.
Mr. Morgan, do you have something to add to this?
Yeah, I guess I'll answer Councilmember Bentley's question first, is for our project that we improved Woodland Manor, we had a similar situation where the outfall was a county canal during Hurricane Irma. Flooding came up and water came back into the neighborhood, and so, we actually installed through permit with the county, think of it as a flapper gate, right? So, it flows out, but if it stages up so high, it can't flow back into the neighborhood. And so, for Ashley Manor, you have a permit from the county for your discharge. You could ask the county to make that kind of a physical change, and the county would look at that with the model they have for the M-1 and decide to permit that for you.
Every neighborhood would have to do that individually, because there's 10 different neighborhoods along that stretch of highway.
Yes, it's whoever the permit was issued to the county, and so, those... You could protect your neighborhood, so you choose, and each neighborhood could so choose to do that, whether or not the St. John's project went through. It's still a permit from the county. The other question I was going to answer was sort of the one that Director Fisher asked is, St. John's has a similar project that's been operating for many years on the Melbourne Tillman system. They have a control structure south of us in Palm Bay, and they pump from a couple different pump locations into the St. John's River to improve the water quality going into the Indian River. And I sat on, representing West Melbourne, through a series of many meetings with St. John's, with the county, with the City of Palm Bay, and some downstream homeowners, as the operations and maintenance manual for the operations of that structure was developed. And so, I would foresee the likelihood that at the end of the day, there'll be an O and M manual for this structure that defines for the operators exactly what they're supposed to do before certain weather conditions, so that you don't have it staged up in advance of the anticipation of major storms. That's exactly how Melbourne Tillman operates, theirs under permission from St. John's. I don't know if St. John's is operating this weir or Brevard County is going to operate this weir, but whoever the operator is, they will have an O and M manual that reduces the risk of it being staged up prior to a storm event. I don't know, Mark, if you know who's going to be the operator?
St. John's River Water Management.
St. John's will actually operate this weir.
And is that their plan, what he's suggesting?
There is. It is. There is an operations manual, there's an operating schematic that is going to... That has all the elevations, you know, set already, when to lower the weir. Soon as those elevations start to come up, you know, in the canal, well before any concerning elevation, the weir is going to be lowered. So, the weir will not be... Will not... That weir structure would not be causing any elevated elevations in the canal due to floodwater. So, yeah, all that will happen on this project.
My last question, I know other people may have questions. Does this actually improve the flow of water west? Does that make sense?
Um...
Or is that just... I didn't know if there's really any flow there at all, actually. Right? I mean, it's pretty slow.
There's no flow westward?
Yeah, there's...
No. I mean, now, there's going to be 2019.
This will... I mean, what I can tell you is this is definitely going to be removing a large volume of water from the M-1 canal on a daily basis and pushing it west all the way out to the river. That's, you know, that's for sure what this system is going to do, but there's no appreciable flow west. Most of the flow is east through the M-1 canal that runs through West Melbourne. It's flowing east to the Indian River.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dittmar?
Thank you, Mayor. I seem to recall that we talked about this before, that there would be some type of plan to occasionally, and maybe I misunderstood here tonight, but we would occasionally remove some of those nutrients with the buildup, the muck or whatever you want to call it. There was some kind of plan that would remove some of that or mitigate some of that to keep it down. That's not going to be the case, or we're still going to do that?
I'll speak for the district. They do have an operation and maintenance plan where they expect to have their crews on-site periodically to maintain the system, remove accumulated vegetation, if, you know, whatever is required to keep the stormwater treatment area, you know, functioning well and healthily.
So, for some reason, I recall, we talked that there was going to be periodically, you guys are going to remove some of those excess nutrients out of that retention area. Maybe I misunderstood, but that's what I thought the plan would have been.
Right now, there is no plan to remove any of that vegetation.
So, what's the build? They're just going to let it just keep building up and building up?
It will settle into the bottom, as it would any stormwater pond.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Since the device is mechanical, what plans or security is there for our neighborhoods in terms of if the device malfunctions in the event of a high rain situation?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. The weir structure is a... It's a bladder-controlled weir, so the way it stays up is by inflating bladders that lift the weir up. So, in the case of any kind of failure, it would fail down, because the bladders would deflate. They would deflate if not maintained with a pump, with the compressor, keeping air in the bladder. So, it fails... It's designed... The system is designed to fail safe and to fail into the open position. So, if anything happened, power failure or anything else, it's going to drop. It can't stay up without the system actively keeping it inflated.
Thank you.
The City of Melbourne as well as the City of Palm Bay got big-time grants from the state to help with cleaning the water, and that money is going towards really new technology for the baffle boxes. So, when the water gets discharged, it's clean. When the water leaves your acreage here, do we have anything like that on the discharge end of it?
So, we considered those types of active systems, but because of the acreage we have, the size of this pond, it's pretty significant, this pond is able to do an equivalent amount of stormwater nutrient removal that one of those types of systems would do, which, you know, we... And we've used those systems. They're very good in situations where you can't get a pond of appreciable size in order to get that type of nutrient removal. So, luckily, we have the acreage to do all the treatment we need to do.
How is the water released from the pond? And what... How long does it have to sit in there to get cleaned, to get released?
So, it's really just a flow-through situation. If you look at the plan, and actually, I'll go to the last slide, the water that comes in from the east pump station crosses under St. John's Heritage Parkway and discharges kind of on the west side of the pond. And if you look, you can see there's a finger-shaped berm in the middle of the pond that divides the two halves, and the water has to flow north around the top, the north edge of the berm, and then all the way back south. That is what we call detention time, and it's a function of how much flow is coming in and how much area and volume is in the pond. But that detention pond is a number of days, and so, we're getting a lot of time where the water has time to be treated. And some of it is through settlement, some of it is through microbial action, where what ends up being released is nitrogen, nitrogen gas into the atmosphere, which is what's already in the atmosphere. So, there is a very significant amount of detention time that occurs because of that route for the water to take.
All right. Thank you.
Is there any other slides you want to show us before you conclude?
Just, this is our... This is our current project schedule from this point. We are hoping to start procurement of bids for construction this month, and then hoping to start construction late in this year, and it'll probably go for 24 months.
Now, is this one of those cases where you issue your own permit? I know we have just a little hang-up when we go to St. John's for a permit. It takes like forever. Do you want to come to us for a permit, or so we can just... Or how do you do your permits?
So, the St. John's... St. John's does not permit themselves. We got permits from the Department of Environmental Protection as well as from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, from the City of West Melbourne, thank you, site plan approval from the City of West Melbourne for the east pump station, and we're hoping for the west pump station as well. We have permits from DOT for crossing I-95 and for running along 192, and we have permits from Brevard County Public Works. So, we have been through FPL, Florida Gas, it's a long list, and we've been diligently pursuing. We're at the point where we have just about everything. So, we're hoping for your favorable consideration of this request to add on this additional pump station on your... On this site within the cities.
And the actual permit that the Building Department issues is really for the electrical panel that's with that pump, so... But we do give site plan approval, so that's sort of a form of a permit.
I don't foresee that being a problem. Mr. McDowell?
Thank you, Mayor. Some of us were not here when your first plan was introduced, okay? So, just so you know that, because you made this statement, we were all here. We were not. So, with that said, I didn't hear the reason why you went to Plan B, why you changed the plan. Why isn't it not going overflowing into the mitigation field that is Melbourne property? And now, it's being pumped across and into your designated property?
I'm probably going to let Mark help answer this question, but I'll start by saying the Water Management District and the Wetland Mitigation bankers could not reach an agreement. That's why.
That's an answer, but it's not the answer. I was kind of hoping to hear the reason.
Right. So, the mitigation bank has contractual obligations to maintain their mitigation bank in a certain condition into perpetuity, and so, there was concern that the change in hydrology would affect their ability to provide mitigation bank credits, and for that reason, they deny that request.
Any closing statements?
Thank you for your time.
All right. Well, thank you for all that. I know you've been working on this for many years, so...
Mayor, appreciate it.
All right. Does anybody else from the public wish to address City Council on this topic? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. What's a wish of the council?
No, we were doing C and D separately, both together, but voting...
Separate motions, yes.
Separate motions. But C is part one and part two. You want part one and part two all together?
Yes.
On C, all right.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll make the motion to approve the transmittal of large-scale comprehensive plan map amendment and approve the first reading of ordinance... plan map amendment and approve the first reading of ordinance number 2022-14, changing the future land use of the property from low-density residential to institutional for 5.94 acres of land located on the west side of St. John's Heritage Parkway, approximately 2,500 feet north of US 192.
Thank you. Motion, do we have a second? Mr. Dipmore?
I'll second, I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion from Deputy Mary Young, second from Mr. Dipmore. Any other discussion? Ms. Young, anything? Okay. All those in favor, second by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Nay.
Motion carries six to one. Mr. Bentley voting nay. Which brings us to the last, the second part of that, Resolution 22, 2022-15. Mr. Dipmore?
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion to approve the first reading of 2022-15, changing the zoning of the subject property. 59.24 acre property from R1A to P1 with the condition the comprehensive plan map amendment is approved.
Thank you. Ms. Adams?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor, second by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries six to one. Mr. Bentley voting nay. All right. That concludes the action agenda. Next up, we have the public forum where the public is allocated three minutes to address City Council. No cards, no speakers. Next, we have the consent agenda. We have six items on that. Does anybody want to pull any of those? Ms. Adams, you have your light on? No? Mr. Francis?
Seven.
Seven C. Mr. Dipmore?
I was just going to make a motion then to approve all of that.
Anyone else want to pull any other ones? Okay. So we're pulling seven C. You want to make a motion to pass the other five as presented?
Yes, sir. Make a motion to pass C, all the other items on the consent agenda as presented.
That's items A, B, D, E, and F. I'll second the motion. Any, all those in favor, second by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries seven zero. And item seven C, that's Resolution 2022-12, updating the 2009 listing of acceptable plants to meet the city's minimum code requirements.
Yeah, she, I think she misunderstood our, our pointing. We needed her to come to the speakers area for, for this item.
Mr. Francis just pulled items seven C. That's the acceptable plants to meet the city's minimum code requirements.
I had a question on where we came up with the list because I, I looked at the palms that were approved, the nine palms that are approved, and, you know, I just, none of the, none of the palms that I have in my community are on that list. And I'm just, I don't understand why. I, I looked at the Florida friendly plant list from the University of Florida.
Right. We cannot use that list. No, we, we didn't use that list. So, you know, we did have some discussion on it. What I'm going to let you know is just like I did in the staff report, that, you know, the city already had an existing manual of acceptable plants. And part of the thinking by the landscape architect team that I had when we presented the code to you was that although there is that University of Florida list, there's some other available resources. The county has modified some of that for their use, too. We really felt it was prudent to have species that we knew, you know, would thrive here or were native. So that's the answer to your question. It doesn't mean, you know, and I certainly don't want to give the impression to anybody that they can't plant whatever they want. They certainly can.
But some of the nicer palms, like the Silvestres and stuff like that, they're a little more expensive. And they, for me, they look a whole heck of a lot better than a queen palm. And they're not on our list as county.
Right. No, because they're not, a Sylvester palm is not a native palm, sir.
So only native palms are on your list? Like the Foxtail's not a native palm, but all the developers are putting them in?
Right.
So, I mean, it's like.
The developers put them in, absolutely. You are correct. Yeah. So remember, for the single family, which is what I believe you're talking about, you don't, you're not really talking about the commercial and the apartments and whatnot.
Correct. The community since.
Yeah. So for the single family, probably with most of Sawgrass Lakes, you're going to have the three trees, you know, per lot. And it can be, you know, any of the, the trees that are allowed, you know, in sort of the listing. And then anything in addition to that, you know, it's have at it. You can put whatever you want.
I understand that.
Right. So, you know, it, I don't want you to think that you're being penalized for putting other palms. But remember, this list serves not just, you know, your type of community, but it serves the commercial, the industrial, the institutional, the apartments. And so those are the ones that we have issues with. I never have issues with developers who say, you know, I'm going to put in a maple and an oak and a holly on each lot.
I get it. I just thought it could be a little more broad of a list and, and, you know, maybe have some nicer looking palms rather than, I know our developer put a lot of queen palms in, which is kind of cheapest palm you can buy out there. And, and it just, it just seems like if it was on the list, it might, it might be more utilized and look better for our community. That's all.
Yeah. It, remember the list is, like I said, something that we kind of finessed. It was a landscape architect who, you know, has many sort of criteria when they're looking at plants and trees for each site. And some of that has to do with viability, some of it has to do with pests, some of it has to do with soil conditions in our area. There's probably like a list of 10 to 15 criteria that they look at in terms of what will do good over time, you know, in our community. So that, that was part of it.
Yeah, I looked at that. You know, they had, you know, through the university, they had 23, I think for our area that would be good, good fits. And I was just, you know, and that was, that was same with all the, all the things. For our small trees, they, they have 47 on their list. We got 26. And, you know, it goes through that way, the whole list. And I was just wondering how we came up with what we're doing and, and it.
Yeah, we actually had 47 trees total. And with this new list, there's 63. So we did expand it from the previous list. Like I said, if you would like me to kind of go plant by plant with the landscape architect and talk to her more about, you know, how she made a decision on each of those 63 trees and plants.
The one person came up with this whole list?
No, but she did look at, like I said, I have a lot of respect for this employee who has lived in this area as long as I have, since the 90s. So no disrespect to the University of Florida. I'm a staunch Gator, as Mr. Rose knows. But, you know, the, from what she explained to me, a lot of those folks are in other offices. You know, they're up in Gainesville, they're in Tallahassee. She looked at the list and she really felt that, you know, by adding the additional trees and plants, that we were creating a list that was realistic for us, too.
The way their list operated was you put in the zip code and it narrows it down to your area.
I understand. Yep, I understand. But she did look at that list from the University of Florida. So I don't want you to think that we didn't look at other resources.
I was just surprised that the majority of the palms that the developer put in in ours wouldn't have counted towards the tree. So I was surprised to see that. Do we have options? I saw that we could, we could add trees to the list. That's why you didn't put it actually in the code, right? The manual?
Right. Yeah, the code.
Could be adjusted.
The code, it takes a little bit more to change. And yes, as a manual, we could, you know, make changes to it over time. So absolutely.
Thank you. No further questions.
So do you want to hold off on that and add to the list? Or are we just going to pass that?
I'm fine either way. I mean, I feel very comfortable. You know, like I said, it wasn't that we just threw this together. There was some analysis that was done. I wouldn't have brought it to you if there hadn't been some analysis.
I understand.
You all, as a majority, feel we need to go back and kind of go through each and every item, you know, and I need to spend several hours with her doing that. But we'll do that, do whatever you'd like.
But in the future, if you have 10 plants, trees you want to add?
I was just, I mean, we're allowing these, you know, developers to put in these palms and they tell us what palms they're putting in. I just, if we're going to allow them, why not add them to the list? I just don't understand why it's, I, I just.
But we don't allow those in a commercial site? Is that what you're saying?
No, they, they can put them. It's just they don't count. So let's say a commercial site is required to have 50 trees. And let's say, you know, they want to have for the Sylvester palms, another 50. Fine. In addition to the 50 that are from that list, go plant another 50. And the same thing with, you know, any of the subdivisions. Like, that's why I said, you know, it's not, don't think of this as a list that stops people from planting. Not at all. It's just, you know, this list is for a specific reason, and that's for the long-term sustainability of landscaping in our area. That's what it's for.
But we can add trees?
We can certainly look into it. Yeah, that, that's the route that I would prefer to take is if there are specific, like if Mr. Francis does want me to look into the Silvestri, you know, I'll kind of come up with a game plan to look at whether that's viable.
That was just one example of some of the palm, the nicer palms that they were putting in. I, I actually prefer the ones that self-clean. So, you know, so, and they weren't on the list either.
Right.
I'm okay if we, if we just want to add, if we're allowed to add to it. Maybe if we had suggestions, we can adjust the manual as we go. But I'm okay with how you did. I, you did great work. I'm not, you know, I'm not negative towards that at all. I was just curious.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you understood that we, we did go through a process in creating the list and updating it.
Does he want to make a motion?
Yes, sure.
Okay.
Make a motion. We approve 22, or 2022-12 as written.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Any other discussion? All those in favor, second by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries seven zero. That completes the consent agenda. Next up, we have the action. We have the action agenda. We have five items on that. Our first item is establish proposed millage rate for the public hearing, also known as the trim notice. I am very much not in favor of the city manager's proposal, but I'll let him show his PowerPoint or whatever he's doing first.
Thank you, Mayor, Mr. City Council. So this is a decision tonight for what the council will direct staff to send to the county for providing notice to every property owner of proposed millage rate. So tonight, you must determine the advertised millage rate, and you cannot postpone making this decision because the, the property appraiser sends out that notice to every property owner in August. And then in September, you'll actually consider the rate that you determine tonight. So on September 21st, following the second hearing, you may adopt the tax rate for next fiscal year that is the same or lower than the advertised rate. But in no event could you adopt a rate that's higher than what you established this evening. So I guess my, my caution to the council is you should know that tonight's decision will represent the upper limit of what the council may consider adopting in September. So if there's, you know, some consideration of, of thinking about it some more, would suggest you err on the high side. So as we talked about at our final budget workshop last month, I presented some alternative millage rates, and there's several ways of looking at it. So the current rate is 2.4248 mils. And then there's four lower rates that you might consider in addition to maintaining the current rate. The first one would be 2.3850, which is the same as the rate we, that the council adopted for 2014-15. Lower rate number two at 2.2975, that's the rate that the council adopted in 2009, 2010. My recommendation, which is what we based the proposed budget on, is 2.1367. And the rollback rate is 2.1186. Obviously, you have choices in between those, but those were just, you know, five choices that we talked about at the last workshop. So in terms of what that means, in terms of revenue to the city, there's a couple of ways of looking at it. One is how much is what would be actually billed to taxpayers, right? So the current rate would bill about 6.1 million. 2.3850 would bill 6 million. 2.2975 would bill just under 5.8 million. The recommended rate of 2.1367 would bill just under 5.4 million. And the rollback rate would be 5,338,000 and change. So another couple of ways of looking at those same ones is. Here we go. So making the assumption that we will actually collect 95.855%. So as you know, if you mail your tax payment back to the tax collector in the month of November, you get a 4% discount. Most property owners take that. And then there's a, typically a small amount of delinquency. So for budgetary purposes, I'm estimating that we would actually collect 95.855% of what's billed. So again, what does that mean to the city of West Melbourne in terms of revenues at that assumed collection amount? It ranges from 5.85 million at the top end to 5.117 million at the rollback rate. So the trim calculation, which is included in your staff report, think of trim as excluding new development, but otherwise, the rollback rate represents a 0% additional taxes collected. So if you ran these different alternatives through the trim worksheet that you have as, as your staff report, the current rate would be 14.36% more than rollback. The 2014-15 rate would be 12.57% more than rollback. The 2.2975 would be 8.44% over rollback. The rate that I'm suggesting is 0.85% greater than rollback. And rollback, of course, is So what would those rates mean in terms of percent change of our actual current year collections? So we're, we're at the end of the budget year in terms of, there's almost no trickling late payments coming in in July and August and September. So we've collected 5,018,000. So based upon the estimated collection rate of 95.855, what would those rates mean over currently collected revenues, ad valorem revenues? So the current rate would be 16.6, 14.8, 10.6, 2.9. And the rollback rate would still get us 2% greater than what we have collected this year. So be happy to answer questions about these alternatives for you to consider to advertise.
I think I'll take the lead. Let me tell you why I'm against rolling it back. There's a lot of uncertainty in the world, as we all know. Inflation is rampant. Everything's costing more money. Our projects are way over budget. And so I don't think now is the time to, to roll it back. And let me give you some things, just some, these are not in order, just some thoughts I had. I believe in your report, you said that the department budgets, most of them are up. What they're going to be spending, most of them from 2.1, I think, all the way up to 26.5%. Their budgets have gone up. We're spending about. We're spending about 800 more thousand dollars in your proposed budget versus last year. A number I don't have is we have amended the budget a number of times for projects. I don't know how much we amended it. In other words, whatever we advertised, do you have that number, Mr. Morgan?
Yes, the only general fund amendment you've made this year was when we added the ARPA-funded project to provide a $1,000 pay for employees. So that was your budget amendment that you've adopted this year.
OK, that one, and we gave the police 4%, and the other people 2%.
Because those came so late in the year, at July 1, we didn't need to amend the budget to accomplish... We did...
Spent more, but...
Yeah, we didn't need to amend the budget because of the vacancies that we've had in those departments.
So with inflation, obviously, there's a lot of issues. Supply issues, getting projects done, they're costing more money. Shortage of workers costs more money to fill that. The stock market is way down, way down. I'm sure our police pension that we're very proud of, it's... I'm sure it's still in decent shape, but it's probably down plus or minus 20%. Housing starts have slowed. As you look on the Friday report all the time, it's... A lot of times, we don't have any permits for single-family housing. Most economists say that the recession is a good 50% to 75%. And Mr. Morgan, you said it somewhere in there. Obviously, we can all just take a guess on what that will be. But I don't think any of us have that real knowledge. But a lot of places are gearing up for that. I would rather be in good shape than... Oh, I missed the projection. We have a lot of grants, which is a good thing. But a lot of them are calling for matching funds. And of course, a lot of the projects are costing more, so we're going to have to add more money to that. And we'll hear about some of those coming up later tonight. An interesting statistic, kind of threw me off a little bit, was the money we... The ad valorem we collect, over 60% of that is from non-homesteaded property. In other words, Walmarts and apartment complexes and things like that. A little over 30% is from our single-family residents. So most of this ad valorem we talk about is obviously not from our single-family homeowners. Even if your property went up $100,000 this year, the most you're... As a homesteaded property, the most it can go up is 3%. Business property values have slowed down. We didn't get the statistics on that, but the values of those have slowed down. Another interesting thing is our whole budget is based... Or a lot of it is based on the money for this year is paid in the rear. So it's last year's money that we're using for this next year because you pay your taxes in the rear, correct, for the past? I just don't think now is the time to roll back the taxes. We don't know what's going to happen. I think we give our residents a good value for their money. I think West Melbourne expects better than average. And I think our residents enjoy the amenities that we offer. And we don't want to just be average. I think our employees enjoy the compensation package that we give them. Can we do better for them and for our employees and our residents? We probably can. Comparing our rate, the 2.4, Melbourne is presently at 7. Palm Bay is 7.6. You know, Rockleigh is 6. Cocoa Beach, 5.96. Saddle Beach, 8.6. And of course, Melbourne Village has almost peaked out statutorily at 9.8. Another thing to consider is we were supposed to have a workshop today to talk about maybe building new council chambers and second floor and all that. So that hadn't even been included in this budget hearing. So that's more reason not to advertise it at the lower rate. There's a lot of projects that we have in the Hoffer that we're talking about, and maybe some of them will do, maybe some of them won't. And I can tell you, every one of these will cost us money, like a fire department, the water plant. We're talking about major park improvements, senior center. We always talk about higher wages, probably double digits this year if we're keeping up with inflation. We're talking about improvements for the sewer plant, just to name a few. And I just think now is not the time to do this because we don't know what the future is. And if we're wrong, that's great. We have more money. Cash is good. If we do get in a recession, we'll have prices because a lot of building goes down. We'll get a better value for that. But especially during this trim, we still have a few months to think about it. If we advertise the proposed rate, like Mr. Morgan said, we can't go off a penny if our needs grow. So that's my thoughts, at least some of them. Mr. Dittmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Morgan, I have a couple of questions for you on the staffing. I know we talked about, first of all, the budgeting that you have from the different departments. Are those budgets that they've submitted, does that reflect everyone being at their... For the purpose of what we're funding them for or projecting their budgets? Is it based on 100% of staffing levels for them? Or is it based on the current levels?
The current levels, the only two positions that are changed from the current authorized positions. There's one additional water maintenance worker in the Water Division of Public Works that's paid for out of the water fund. And then the proposal is to move a part-time planning intern in the Planning Department to a associate planner position, so a part-time position to a full-time position. So we've purposely tried to not increase the general fund demand by adding general fund positions. But to answer your question, yes, all the positions are budgeted as if they're filled the entire year.
OK. So without even projecting any layoffs or anything like that, we have enough, based on your budget, to pay for everything as-is next year at 100% staffing, other than what you just outlined? So... The Building Department, the mayor mentioned that we're going to be looking at probably doing this building that we're going to be doing. That's all going to be paid out of that fund from the Building Department money, the funds, correct, not out of the general fund?
Yes, we have excess revenues we've collected over the years and prior years that the council has determined to consider building a new department... Building Department building and using that excess. And so that can't be used for any other purpose other than building plan check inspection services. We can't use that for other city purposes. So that's the budget includes that.
OK. And the difference between the total rollback and your proposed millage rate is somewhere between $44,000 and $46,000. Do I have that number correct?
Yes, it was on one of the slides, but that sounds about right. Yes, sir.
OK. So the difference being $44,000 to $46,000 is... And that work... I know you've done this a long time, and I've seen it a few times myself. But I assume some of the departments also build in some of their additional money that they have. So I guess what I'm getting at is, is the $44,000 crucial for the city with the multimillion-dollar budget that we have? Or is that just sort of kind of the number you ended up with, and you thought we'd just go with the higher millage?
That was the number that we based the budget on. If the council went to rollback, we would certainly not suggest changing the budget for that purpose.
So we could maintain without having an issue at this time? And everything's already budgeted out for the year as far as the salaries? You figured in the raises already for everyone that we did already? All that's all done? OK. So the raises are figured in? Everything's taken care of? I'm going to make a motion right now that we go with the full rollback. The full rollback rate is, I don't see a necessity increasing at $44,000. I think that with a multimillion-dollar budget, we'd be fine, so.
Do we have a motion on the floor for Mr. Dittmore? Do we have a second to that?
I do, a second.
We have a second from Mr. Bentley.
And I also wanted to talk.
Mr. Bentley, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. I think the city's, you know, said this actually last time, the city's doing really well. We've got... I think we're required to have something on the order of a couple of months' worth of a quote rainy day fund, and we're sitting up close to a year, I think. We're still planning on putting either last year or this year, $2 million, I thought it was, in the bank with all things that we're given. So, you know, there's... We're continuing to build that surplus even with our millage rate being what it is. We do get a lot of money from other sources other than our ad valorem. Actually, I think the ad valorem, what is it? 5% or 10% of our budget?
Yep, it's 5 million, you know, so of the general fund, think of it as a $17 million general fund. So between a quarter and a third of the general fund. But then the total budget with a significant amount of grants and ARPA money...
5 million out of 30 million or 40 million.
Yeah. So, but it's certainly important in that it funds our basic operations. For example, that's roughly equivalent of what it costs to run the police department year in and year out. So the ad valorem is an important component. It's our single-largest general fund revenue component, so it is important.
Right, but the difference between rollback and your recommendation, it's on the order of below 50K. And we're still putting a couple of million dollars in the bank at the end of your budget year, assuming everything goes as planned or somewhere near as planned. So I stay with my second on that. I think it's pretty clear that we can afford to do this. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Frampton?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't really think it's fair to compare us to Melbourne or Palm Bay like you did, Mayor, because they're including their fire services in their percentage for their ad valorem, is that correct?
Yes.
So, I mean, one, if we do choose to go with a fire department, our percentage is going to go way up, and it's going to pay for those services. But we're not going to be paying the county for the services. So it's hopefully going to be a wash in our favor, and that's the decision we're going to have to make coming up. And so in the grand scheme of things, I agree with Mr. Bentley. It's we're going to be putting money back in the bank, and I support the rollback number.
Thank you. I think, just like everybody else, we'll be good for the next year and maybe the year after. But when things go south, I mean, if we do get into recession, I know before, I know Mr. Morgan's talked about this a couple of weeks ago with me, that we might have to think about freezing employees, non-critical, of course. So I just hate to be in that position at all. So for a few dollars a month for ad valorem, it's, I think we can do better service. Obviously, with more money, we can do more projects. I mean, there's a lot of projects out there that we're looking at. And there's other projects, if you think outside the box, that we can certainly help people. I mean, other cities are doing it. And yes, our rates are different than other cities. Not all those cities I mentioned, of course. But I don't think they offer what we offer. And I think our citizenry likes what we're doing. I don't see a whole lot of changes regardless of what rate you do or services. But we also know that different departments have asked for more employees and other things, and they were turned down. And that's city manager's prerogative. I don't sit in those meetings, and they're not allowed to come here and tell us what they want or need, but it's a real thing. And I just think we can do more in the future. And we're not rolling in dough. We have a good reserve, yes, but we also have a lot of projects out there. So that's my feeling. So anyone else? Ms. Young? I'm sorry, you're not... Phone, OK. All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, signal a saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Nay. Motion passes 5 to 2. Deputy Mayor and myself voting nay. And Diana voted nay. OK. So the rollback... Pardon?
I think it was 4 to 3, not 5 to 2.
Yeah, OK. So the motion passes 4 to 3 with Adams, Rose, and Young voting nay. OK, so that will be advertised as a rate. And when we come back in September, remember, you can't go up. But if you're feeling good and we have too much money, you can go down to 1.5 or whatever number you'd like. All right. Our next item up is amendment to the subdivision code to update the recreation fee. And this is Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, the city's comprehensive plan requires that residential development provide the appropriate amount of park space to support the resident population that the development generates or pay a recreation fee in lieu of dedication of parkland. Section 8664 of the city's code implements that comprehensive plan policy and specifically requires the dedication of park or recreation land to the city or payment of that recreation fee in lieu when certain things happen. It's either as a condition of a final plat of a subdivision for a one- or two-family residential development or approval of a site plan for a multifamily residential development. As a condition of the approval of a subdivision replat or a multifamily residential site plan amendment when that replat or amendment increases the population of that particular development. Or as a condition for the issuance of a building permit when five or more residential dwelling units are going to be constructed on one lot or parcel or tract under common ownership. The code directs that five acres of land shall be dedicated for every 1,000 projected resident population. The projected resident population of a development is determined by multiplying the maximum number of units in that development by three in the case of one- and two-family residential development or by 2.5 in the case of multifamily development. And that's based on statistics that tell us the averages of how many people occupy a single-family home versus an apartment unit. For example, in the case of an apartment development with what seems to be our magic number of 300 maximum potential units, give or take, the number of acres to be dedicated is calculated by multiplying 300 by 2.5 persons. That equals 3.75 acres. So if the developer of that 300-unit hypothetical apartment were to say, "City, here's 3.75 acres," the city agreed that those were usable acres and that it made sense that the city accept that dedication and that that become part of our park system, then the developer could comply with the code in that fashion. When a developer elects to pay a recreation fee instead of dedicating land, the city takes that money in, and we hold it in our Recreation Trust Fund to be used for capital expenses related to the expansion of the city's existing recreation system or improvement of the city's recreation system. Potential uses include things like acquisition of new lands, either by purchase or by lease, improvement of recreation facilities, construction of new recreation facilities, pickleball courts, things like that. City cannot use those funds for payment of operating costs like salaries, maintenance. It has to be used to improve and enhance or expand the system. To calculate the fee the developer pays, under the ordinance, you multiply the acreage that would be required to be dedicated by a fixed amount that's supposed to represent the rough cost of the city if it were to go out and purchase land, the cost per acre. Back in December of 2018, the city council established the rate of $80,000 per acre as representative of that fee. So in the example we just discussed, that 3.75 acres at $80,000 an acre would generate a recreation fee of $300,000. Now, remember, when developers build private amenities, private recreation facilities on their... on their property, they can get some credit against the recreation fee for that. Back when you adopted the $80,000 fixed fee per acre, council also adjusted downward the maximum credit that they can receive from 75% once upon a time, ratcheted that all the way down to 35%. So, now, the developers can never, even if they built the Taj Mahal of pool and clubhouse and shuffleboard and facilities, they could never reduce their fee by more than 35% of the amount of the fee. That's where they cap out in what they can receive a credit for. The ordinance requires that every four years, staff update that fixed fee per acre, because as you know, the cost of purchasing land changes. So, what I did, because we're approaching, that was in December of 18, we're approaching that four-year mark, I looked at all of the significant vacant land purchases within the city from the time of that ordinance until now. So, any relatively large vacant land purchases where the land involved was enough that the city could have purchased some or all of that land to construct or to use for recreation lands. There's a table in your staff report that names those purchases, usually by reference to the development or future development, also the sale price per acre that they paid, and those purchases average out to a sale price per acre of $112,489. Based on that data, I have recommended in the staff report here, and I prepared an ordinance recommending that the current fixed fee per acre of $80,000 be increased to $110,000 for purposes of calculating the recreation fee in lieu of dedication. It's a significant increase, it's a 35% increase roughly, but that reflects what we all know the market has done. If the city were going to go out and purchase vacant land for park property today, it would cost significantly more at this time than it would have in 2018. So, it's reflective of the market, and in that sense, I believe it's fair. At this time, Mayor, if I may, I'll read the title to the ordinance, and then I'm happy to answer any questions and address council discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ordinance number 202217, an ordinance of the city of West Melbourne, Brevard County, Florida, amending Chapter 86 subdivisions, Article 2 improvements, Section 8664, dedication of parkland or payment of recreation fee, updating the fixed fee per acre when a developer elects to pay a recreation fee in lieu of dedication of park and recreation land, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for codification, and providing an effective date. And I will just note, because I didn't previously, this is first reading of this ordinance, so it would come back a second time to council if approved tonight. The request tonight is to approve it upon first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Frampton.
Thank you, Mayor. We are leaving the 35% in place, is that correct? Mr. Richardson?
Yes, sir, I have not recommended a change to the 35% maximum credit that developers can receive. There was a robust discussion about that just four years ago, and I'm not aware of any circumstances that have changed to affect the decision council made back then. You can certainly discuss it. It would require a significant change to this proposed ordinance if you were going to amend that either upwards or downwards.
I'll make a motion that we approve the first reading ordinance, number 2022-17 as written.
Thank you, Mr. Tipmore.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Bentley?
Oh, sorry.
Missed your name. Okay, all those in favor, say my thing, aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries seven zero. I think this will put more money in our recreational fund, so that's a good thing. Our next item is, not you yet, sorry, update council list of liaisons to outside agencies and city boards.
Yes, this is the council appointments that they make of themselves to different boards. Some of them are outside the city, some are liaisons to the city boards. Upon the resignation of Councilmember Bachelor, I reviewed the list, and I was asked to bring this back to council. Mr. Bachelor served as an alternate on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and he also served as liaison on the Planning and Zoning Board. So, there are two vacancies there, so I just wanted to let council know, and if they wanted to make any replacements for those two.
I'd like to ask Ms. Adams if she would like to take those two positions. I know you volunteer, you attend a lot of meetings, so this is pretty light compared to all the meetings you attend, but are these two of interest to you, the planning and zoning and parks and rec? I guess that would be, yeah.
Yeah, it would be an alternate to parks and rec. I already served as their deputy chair prior to joining council, and I've already been attending the planning and zoning meetings, so I'm happy to fill those.
All right. Can we have a motion to do that? Mr. McDowell? Mr. Bentley?
I thought he said second.
I didn't.
Oh, I thought you said you had a motion.
You made, you're making a motion.
I'm sorry, I'll make the motion to.
Bentley?
Second.
Mr. Morgan, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know with my pending retirement, my last MPO TAC meeting was this month. There's no TAC meeting or MPO board meeting in August, and so if you wanted to now, since it's on your agenda as an agenda item, if you wanted to name someone as your representative to the technical advisory committee, you could certainly do so, since it's on your agenda.
Yeah. Yeah.
Certainly, Mr. Rhodey is very well qualified in technical. I don't, I haven't asked him about whether he'd be willing, but certainly as your incoming city manager, I think it's been valuable for West Melbourne to serve on the TAC. I mean, obviously, it's been a lot of years, but I think over the years, that sort of helped moved up some of our large projects that have been important to us towards the top of the list, some of which have been constructed and some of which are still at the top of the list, but I think it's good to be there. It probably meets 10 times a year, it's not an overwhelming obligation, but I think it's good to.
Mr. Rhodey, are you familiar with the term voluntold?
I think you need to hit that.
I would be honored to serve.
Did you want to add that to your motion?
Yes, I'd like to amend the second motion, which was the first motion, or the original, yes.
Just add it to the original, do you agree with that, Mr. Bentley? Okay, so. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of those changes, say my thing, aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries seven zero. Also, I just want clarification on these Florida League of Cities. Mr. Bentley, are you still on the Transportation and Governmental Relations Board?
It's in the process of changing, I think, to municipal.
Okay.
But they haven't sent the final approval of the new people, but everybody had the opportunity last month, I think with the League of Cities, to put in for which committee they wanted, and I switched committees, so I'm still on it.
Okay.
But I think I'm going to be on the municipal one, and I think others may have selected a different committee as well. I'll know soon which one I got.
Deputy Mayor Young, it says here you're on the Land Use and Economic Development?
Yes, I'm still on the Land Use and Economic Development. I've received an acknowledgement email, but I don't have the actual letter yet.
Okay. And Mr. Frampton, are you still in the municipal administration?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the rule is that no two council people from the same city can be on the same board?
But it's going to change here in the next, what?
Month. We'll know in a few weeks.
I didn't, I didn't sign up for another.
Okay, all right. All right. Very good. All right. Mr. Morgan, did you have anything, or you're like?
No, that's, oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right. All right, and next up, Mr. Rhodey's switching seats, musical chairs, so I guess he must be up with the Melbourne Estates CDBG water project options.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Wanted to bring back, we had a good, the council had a good discussion last council meeting relative to the Melbourne Estates CDBG project. Wanted to bring that back. There was some discussion whether, whether we would get some additional state funds, which we were, we were not able to get, which then left a gap in the both project funding, and so wanted to bring that back. We talked about three different options, and we have three different options this evening to present. Just going to take a quick step back, and again, apologize that we weren't able to have our work session earlier tonight. Apologize, I was out of the office sick, so weren't able to put those items together, but was able to put together a couple of agenda items with the help of some staff, and so bear with me if there's any additional questions. We, we were able to get this out the door, but probably not as sharp, sharp as we would have liked. So, with that said, just back up a little bit with Melbourne Estates. It is two different projects. The Melbourne Estates flood risk reduction project, which the city council took action on May 17th to move forward with, it's about 2.4 million in, or 2.2 million in grants that we received, and that total project's about 3.3 million, all said and done, and so that we're moving forward with. YCOM was low bidder, working with the state to get the final document signed so that we can move forward with the contract and get that project going. What was in limbo was the second half of that project, which would, which we designate the water line portion of the project, a different CDBG grant, but again, we were trying to do them together as one project. That grant was 750,000, and because the bids came in at 2.5, a little, little bit heftier than we originally had anticipated, it left a funding gap of $3 million to do the whole project. So, again, just as a recap, we, we were enticed by the state that they might have some additional funds. We jumped through a lot of hoops. We, we had a lot of meetings, we had a lot of phone calls, and ultimately, they decided to redesignate those funds to a different program, and so the funds are gone, and we're left here to discuss whether we want to move forward with the project with West Melbourne funds, or if we want to just leave the project at, at the drainage, the original drainage project it was. And so, that's kind of the backdrop. As we move forward, again, this slide just recaps the action that we took on the 17th, which was to move forward with YCOM for the flood risk reduction for 3.3 million dollars. That leads us to the question at hand and the discussion that, that we're looking to have the council participate in tonight, which is really three options with the water main, or with the water line portion of the Melbourne Estates project, which is option one, not taking any action and just moving forward with the flood risk reduction, walking away from the water grant and walking away from the water project and just leaving it a 3.3 million dollar, which is a substantial project, but just leaving it as the flood risk reduction. That's option one. Option two, adding in about $300,000 of change orders of water items that are relative to the system itself, not so much in neighborhood, but specifically how the system ties in and around the Henry Avenue area, and upgrading those connections which, which are in need of that upgrade. That would also allow the discussion, which I've been told has been on the council dice in the past, which is relative to some, some guardrails that haven't been able to be installed because of where the existing Henry Avenue water line comes down. So, that would be option two, kind of doing a little piece of the water. We would not qualify for, for the $750,000 of CDBG grant that we have, but again, that would be a piece of the water project. Option three would be, you know, coming up with the funding ourselves with the ARPA and moving forward with the full project, so doing both the water and the stormwater flood risk reduction altogether, moving forward with the full project. Did reach out to YCOM, had a good conversation with our, our rep that represents YCOM. They are able, you know, they are, are open to the idea of, of holding their bid price and moving forward with the project. There's some items they want to double check, but on a, on a very minor level. Did talk about timing, it is a concern of theirs. They feel that it's aggressive, but something that they, they feel that they can accomplish. Obviously, the hesitation of myself and the discussions in the office is it's a lot of, it's a big project. I mean, it, it's a substantial project for West Melbourne, and to get that completed in two years with some of the supply chain issues that we've seen with some of our smaller projects certainly gives pause and concern, and something that the council should consider. So, I think the, the important part probably that the council's asking themselves is, is cost, and how would we handle that? If we were to move forward with option three, the full program, as originally said, the deficit between the grants and where we stand today is about 3 million. We've already designated 1.5 million of ARPA to do the project, so we would be looking for an additional designation of an additional 1.5, so a total of $3 million of the ARPA fund would, would get this project fully funded in moving forward, if that's the option that the council would like to take. Keep in mind, we only have 23 months to complete this project, so we have to be totally closed out of the grant by June of '24, which is 23 months away. So, that is, that's a real date, that's, that's coming up. It doesn't seem, two years seems like a, a lot can get done in two years, but, you know, two, two years will come faster than we think for, for a five and a half million dollar project. So, that's an item of concern. I guess a special and a last item of note is if we move forward with option one and two, while we would have to walk away from the $750,000 grant because it was for the benefit of the neighborhood, which the $300,000 water project improvement wouldn't qualify for, we have had conversations with the state, and our flood risk reduction project would qualify for the $750,000. So, we would have to entertain going through the process with them to try to convert that $750,000 towards the water project to go towards the stormwater project. Not a for sure, but we have gotten confirmation that that is something that it would be eligible, and it's a possibility that we could, we could divert that money to that. So, that's, you know, these are kind of the high-level 50,000-foot items that the options, of course, you know, there's 100 options. I mean, we could do little pieces here and there, but generally, these, we think these three options are the big picture that, that we would certainly like some feedback from the council and some direction from the council as to move forward. We've, we have been pushing the state hard. We have been pushing them aggressive to keep this moving, and it, and it's not easy, and so we, I, I always have hesitation when I say we, we need a decision now, but, you know, it's not the council's fault that we need a decision quickly, it's, it's the circumstances that we're in which is pushing us to kind of make a decision, get YCOM locked in with a contract and get, either get this project, you know, exactly what part of this project we're moving forward with, as opposed to the indifference we're, we're stuck in now, so.
Thank you. Mr. McDowell?
Thank you, Mayor. So, staying with the, with the pipe situation, you're saying that the option two would be a partial upgrade to the most in need of replacement? Is that the idea?
For the system, but not for residential. We would be, we would be out working on the general water system, upgrading that, not laterals in, in neighborhood.
Okay, I just don't want to get too into the weeds here, but it's, it's some level of some repair, but you put it, it was on the list, so I'm kind of depending on the history here. It was on the list, and that's a big ticket, and we weren't going to spend two and a half or whatever million dollars or $3 million on this infrastructure piping if it wasn't in dire straits, I gather, or anticipated. Are we borrowing, on borrowed time? Is it going to happen anyway?
So, really, it's a combination of two things. One is, it, it is a dated system, right? So, there, there's no doubt. It, as, as you're aware from, from the notices that go out, it's not as if we have water main breaks in this neighborhood all the time. So, it's not, this isn't like a Hollywood reuse line where several members of the council have been through several breaks and issues along that. So, it is dated, but the, the significant item is that we are digging and putting in infrastructure for the flood risk reduction, which is in the same spot as the water. So, it's, it's a, it's an opportunity of convenience that we are literally doing work in an entire neighborhood right next to where their existing water lines are. in an entire neighborhood right next to where their existing water lines are and able to do, if so desired, able to do that at the same time with the same haul, with the same crew and be efficient that way.
All right. Just a quick follow-up on that. I assume that you've received the crystal ball from Mr. Morgan on this.
He has, he has not issued that to me yet. I am, I am waiting.
And what, you know, the risk factor, you know, how, I mean, is this something that, how serious is it? When you said convenience, that kind of threw up, okay, I'm good with it. Let's wait.
Again, it's not failing, but it is a dated, it is a dated infrastructure. So at some point in time, whether it's 15 years, you give or take five years from that, you know, we're going to need to go in and make some improvements, whether that's going to be a two block stretch or the entire neighborhood. It determines on where we start to see the breaks and, and what specific pipes start failing and how they fail.
Thank you.
Mr. Frampton, you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor. How's the company feel, the, the contractor? Do they feel 23 months, they can get this done?
They, they say they can get it done.
Is there any contract provisions if they miss their mark and where they'll compensate us or we can ask for compensation of money, loss?
There is not currently, but I would defer to city attorney Richardson as to compensation.
Is there something we can write in the contract?
Yeah.
Be surprised if they'd go along with that.
For the, for the 23 months?
Well, if they miss their mark and we lose our grant.
Right. So we built in liquidated damages into the contract. If they don't perform timely, they, they run a meter per day that the project's delayed beyond the completion time. It's not directly tied to the monies in the grant agreement. It's a, it's a flat amount per day assessed if they go overtime, so.
Lose our entire grant or just a portion of the grant?
Anything not completed. So we, we can get, we get reimbursed quarterly for work completed, but as an example, if there's $100,000 of project completed after the grant close, we, you know, we're.
I'm in favor of option three, so I think we need to get it done. Thank you.
Ms. Adams, you're up next.
In that same line of thought, if we do have delays that aren't necessarily because of the contractor, if they're because of supply chain issues or things that they can claim they don't control, is there any plan or, you know, as far as addressing issues with the timeline of getting it done by, you know, January 2024? And I don't know if that question is for Mr. Rodi or Mr. Richardson.
Yeah. You know, part of the challenge of the supply chain issues that we have had with some of our existing projects are, are they're, they're no one's fault per se. You know, this, this is, the, the ones that we've encountered are, are we, we open up a hole to make a planned improvement and what's in the ground is slightly different or a better solution presents itself when everything is exposed. And so we decide to, to change something and that delay in ordering a new, instead of an eight inch and, or ordering a 10 inch instead of an eight inch or a, you know, you pick the widget and the, and the type, that delay is really per se no one's fault, right? The contractor, it's certainly not the contractor's fault. We opened it up, we thought it was X and it's Y, and so we're, we want to change it. It's not their fault. It's not our fault. We were working on the information that we had, so.
Right. So to clarify, does it fall under that liquidation piece or no because it's, it might be supply chain?
But keep in mind, the liquidated damages usually encompass our costs associated with the project going later. So extra inspection, administrative delay, they don't typically are not designed to capture reimbursement of a grant. So I think that's, but I'll defer to city attorney.
And I just consulted with Mr. Morgan here on this. If we did have a supply chain issue on the front end, you know, what is the availability of extending those grants through, through request? We might have some flexibility with the $750,000 water line grant, but with the 2.2 million CDBG federal funds administered through the state, that's a, that's a pretty hard and fast deadline. But again, you know, we've had extensive discussions with the contractor on the front end. YCOM has represented that, that they're going to be able to progress the work and, and complete it timely. I think we feel pretty confident that, that the project's going to get done within the 23 months or we wouldn't be going out. But our, our risk is somewhat limited as Mr. Rodi described by the drawdown of grant funds over time, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mary Young.
I just have two comments. So let me make sure I understand this correctly. The, the grant writer that we have come here that does our grants for the CDBG.
Scott Monasette?
Right. Okay. And he's been coming for a while and he was successful and he did get us the grant for the CDBG disaster recovery grant for 2 million, two, for 2.2661. Holy cow. Which allocated the rest of the money from the city ARPA would fund the project. So he was successful, got us the grant. And then, then it says here that the following May, council learned that they were no, that no extra funds would be anticipated. So you mean extra funds in addition to what they already granted us? Or they just took away the grant that once they said we had it, they took it back and now we have to pay that amount?
No, extra funds. So when, so we, we had anticipated a cost, which the city was always going to be contributing money towards this project. When we went out to bid though, the bids came in higher than anticipated and that was the gap that was, that was created. And so as we were talking with the state and we explained, you know, bids came in a little higher and that's obviously the trend that they had been seeing with all of their projects, they had suggested to us that there could be some additional funds and we, you know, we had the mayor sign a nice letter, you know, asking for additional funds. And we, we went through that process only to then learn that, that those funds got allocated to a totally different type of project. It's not that we, it's not that we got beat out by, you know, the next community over. They, they took the funds that they had said were available and used them for a different program.
All right. So we're paying that gap. All right. And then we're also paying the 350,000 in engineering costs because that wasn't, it says here was not included in that originally. So we were already going to pay that anyway.
Correct. That was always West Melbourne contribution.
All right. So thank you for that clarification. But now to Mr. McDowell's point, this was very important when we decided to do this. This is an older subdivision with the older water lines and we have had water line breaks. So we've done the U lining to fix some and other things that we've done to compensate for having these old pipes. And when this became, when this came up and we could fix them, we wanted to fix it. And now, now it's not important anymore and we, we don't have to do it. I, I kind of want to continue on and do as we started and complete this job. The problem is, can it be done by Young's Communication? I understand they've been sold to a different company and of course, I don't know how well the new company is because we've done business with Young's Communication quite a few times, but it's not the same owner anymore.
Yeah. Young's has just a, a very strong reputation and they're, they're in town and their project manager is in town. Those are, their, their history with us and projects is, has been stellar. And so there's no reason to believe any different will be for this project. Obviously, you never know. I mean, those things happen, but nothing has given us any indication that that's not going to be the case, that they're going to be, they're going to be a quality contractor to work with. As to your question as to priority and importance, I don't think we would be having any discussion if the, the bids came in much lower as, as originally anticipated when this project first kind of got off the ground. If, if this total project would have come in at 2.7 million dollars, the funding would be there and we'd be moving forward with the project. The reason we're bringing this back and, and hopefully having this good discussion is that the project did come in, you know, extensive. It's 5.7 now. And so there is a gap and we do have a way to cover that gap with, you know, thankfully with ARPA. But it's, that's the conversation that, you know, we wanted the council to have is, is, is that still the priority at that cost? And, and if that is still the priority and, and the majority of the council wants to move forward with the project, staff is very happy to reach out to Young's and, and get the contract amended and get, get, get it moving forward and, and certainly try to achieve that deadline because it's in everybody's interest to get to that deadline. If it's not that priority anymore, we certainly also don't want to proceed with a, with a project that the council might not be in support of anymore. So that's why it's.
All right. Thank you for all of that. Thank you.
So a couple of questions. The, if this project doesn't go through vote wise, the money we have left over, what would you use that for?
So currently the ARPA, a, a big chunk of the ARPA is spoken for as, as we know from the, the CIP discussion with the budget. But ultimately, you know, we have, we have substantial water infrastructure items that are on our future with the new water plant. So, you know, but budgets are about priorities and if this becomes a priority, then something else, you know, the priority shifts and, and that either gets pushed back a year or gets funded in a different manner. So that's, you know, that, that's the option of what we need to discuss tonight.
It seemed like both are priorities. Didn't the council one time say that we're going to take the ARPA money and spend at least half of it for the water plant? But that's kind of disappeared, just doing all these other projects instead?
No, the, the water plant includes all the improvements to the distribution system, which is what we're using the ARPA funds for. So it's, the water plant is not just the plant itself, but it's also the improvements to the distribution system that are necessary for the plant to function on day one.
So also the pipes in this neighborhood, are they made out of clay or do we know?
A, a variety of material.
Which means what?
A variety of material.
So we got asbestos and we have clay and all this stuff. What other developments do we have that have a variety of material?
What it is, the old water pipes in there are, a lot of them, a lot of the service lines are the old copper service lines, which for some reason, there's a certain areas in the city that the ground deteriorates the copper. It's weird places throughout the city that it eats away the copper. So the majority of the lines are there are, are copper lines for the service lines.
Just the service lines? Okay. But what about the main water distribution lines?
Old lines are, they're the old plastic lines that are in there. A lot of them are just a two inch line feeding the whole neighborhood. So that's another issue that we figured if we were going in there doing the drainage, it'd be a good time to upgrade the whole neighborhood and be done with it.
What other developments that we have that are in similar shape?
I think that's probably, this is probably the only one because this is one of the older neighborhoods, that section right in there.
Okay.
Yeah, we had completed all of the Canova Park over some phases. That would, that was a similar circumstance, but those, those have been completed within the last 10 years.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Ms. Frampton?
Does this project include any reclaimed water since we got all the ground open and everything and?
It does not. The, the reuse water is not in this, is not in.
Available over there?
Yeah. We don't have anything down Henry.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not willing to give up on the residence yet and it was important for us to, to do this project at one time. And I think it's still important to us and I want to make a motion that we move forward with option three and continue on with the project.
Thank you. Mr. Dittmore?
Second.
Any, any discussion on the motion? So we're seeing this is going to pass. What's the next step and when can, when can they get started?
So we'll, we'll, you know, we had, I had a good conversation with YCOM today, letting them know that we were having this meeting tonight. And so we'll, we'll work with the city attorney to adjust the contract and, and move forward with, with how, how we're going to make that contract look to incorporate the whole project again.
Mr. McDowell?
What's the confidence level that we'll get that verbiage or that language in there about the performance issue of the window? Right? Because that's still problematic.
Yeah, we, we have, you know, I, I think we're talking about two different things. So just, just to clarify, you know, liquidated damages, when the project runs late are, are intended to obviously cause a little pain to the contractor and to cover costs by the municipality, you know, inspection, admin, delay costs that are associated with us. We don't have anything in, any language in there to say if, if you go two months long and that causes us not to be able to get reimbursed $200,000 from the feds, you owe us $200,000.
It's fully funded by us is the issue. It's not a grant money. So it's not at risk. That's the answer. So I was assuming we still were getting some monies from the grant, but we're.
And that's the way, I'm, I'm sorry, council member, I didn't mean to interrupt, but that was the way it was put out to bid. Obviously, if it was put out to bid with contractor at risk and some kind of default clause where they have to reimburse the city for any grant funds lost for failure to perform in time, dramatically potentially affects the bid costs, right? So it, but it wasn't put out to bid that way. Their bid was not based on, on that type of downside risk. So it, it can't just be inserted without cost in the contract at this point.
And, and the good news is, I, I think attorney Richardson hit the nail on the head. Every month that we do the project, we are getting reimbursed and so our risk, our risk goes down. You know, this, this isn't like if the old credit card scam or if you don't make the last payment, you know, the whole, the whole interest charge gets put on you. This, you know, this is a, as we incur costs, we get reimbursed and, and so our risk decreases each month.
Right. I should have corrected that. So we really are not fully funded because they're earmarked from the ARPA and the ARPA has some timelines and things that are tied into.
It's a longer timeframe. So the ARPA is December of '24. But if you have a, a contract such as this, it's considered obligated and then you get to go out to '26. So the short fuse is the 2.2 million dollar grant that we got because the neighborhood flooded during Irma. So that's the one that is, is leading the need to be completed soonest.
Mr. Dittmore?
Thank you, Mayor. A few months ago, we had those issues up on the north side of 192 with a contractor and apparently we didn't have the right language or we didn't have the right things in place to push that along. So the performance bond, is that something that we can?
That was entirely different. That was not our contractor. This would be our contractor, performance payment bonds. That was all part of the, the bid package. That's part of the contract. The contract's already written actually right now. I had just scaled back the scope to only include the, the drainage project. Simple matter, you know, less than half day tomorrow for me, I, I think to roll back in the additional water lines project. But yeah, it's bonded, all of those things.
Okay, good.
Great, great question though.
Good question. We have much more control when it's our contractor doing our project than, right?
And this bid is still valid or they?
The, they said they would honor the bid pricing. So what, what, what has been explained to me is supply chain issue delays in getting pipe are still real, but the, they feel, some of the contractors feel that we're at the top, that the cost of the pipe is, does not continue to climb. It's kind of peaked at the cost. Now that doesn't mean it shows up the next day like it used to. There's still delays in getting it, but the, the cost hasn't continued to go up.
And are they going to buy the pipe or are we going to buy the pipe?
They are buying the pipe. So they, that's part of the, the bid that they.
We don't want to buy the pipe and save the 7%?
So we, we discussed some of those options. This is a good case where, where probably wasn't good that we purchased it because then we'd be coming and saying, we already purchased the pipe. So you wouldn't have had much option on, on that one. So you wouldn't have had much option on that one. But yeah, we have discussed internally, we've had some good conversations internally as to moving forward, whether we want to be owner purchase and purchase the pipe on projects ourselves or purchase it through the contractor.
Councilmember Adams?
I had a quick question as far as quality control, only because I remember, and I can't remember exactly the time, it was probably six months ago, give or take. And I was sitting in the audience and listening to a couple of residents share concerns about projects and work that was completed by a contractor and it wasn't done, and I think the council had agreed, the work wasn't done to the highest expectation. Right, with the street issue. And I know that these are completely different projects, but as we're looking at, you know, considerably adding funds to this project, I'm just curious, since it's going to be in and near a neighborhood, do we have any quality control as far as going out to check how it's going back in and how it's going to look and affect the neighborhoods that are there?
Sure. So again, very good question. As the council's aware, you know, Richard Clemens passed away, our construction inspector. We are out to replace that position right now. And so the new construction inspector will be responsible. That's one of the things our construction inspector does is anything in the right way. In addition to that, ISS is the engineer overseeing this project and in their scope of service is construction management as well. So they do have inspectors on site as well. So we have our construction inspector as well as ISS. They team up and work together to inspect. So we have dual inspection oversight.
At the end or throughout the process?
Throughout the project. That's an ongoing weekly cost.
You have to see that as it's going in the ground, that kind of work. And I will say, in my seven years here, we've done a number of projects with Youngs and never had a bad experience with that contractor. We were glad that they bid on this kind of difficult in neighborhood work project, that we got a good quality contractor to do that work.
Which is good and I'm fine with that. I just wanted to make sure that wouldn't be an issue coming back.
Well, this will be very disruptive to the neighborhood for a very long time, sort of like Sylvan Drive. So for those of you that drove through Sylvan Drive when that was going on for the better part of two years, the neighborhood will be very disrupted. But at the end of the day, this is very beneficial to the neighborhood.
And since we're on that topic, since this is going to be a 23-month project, give or take, are we giving the neighborhoods how much advance notice? And will they know that the project is going to extend for so long?
Yep. So now that we have direction, we'll be able to communicate with the residents and set up some meetings. And I myself, I know Richard Clemens and probably other staff have met with people along the way who have had questions and comments and concerns. And so, but now with some direction, we'll be able to reach out and get a schedule going. So it'll take 60 days to mobilize, so.
Thank you.
I think this project will be more disruptive than Sylvan just because this cut through for a lot of local residents, so. But anyway, we'll, I'm sure y'all will deal with that. Mr. McDowell?
One final thing. Let the record reflect that the council or the deputy mayor lives approximately closer than I do to that development, so they could, and she's very good at next door on the system. So her communication skills are excellent. So I think we have an ace in the hole there. They know her well over there.
Thank you.
Well, and I think there's a number of leaders in the neighborhood that know after Irma, we aggressively sought grant money. We don't have enough money on our own to do, you know, that size drainage project. That represents five years' worth of all the stormwater funds in the city. And so they know that we've gone after that money and we were successful. And so, again, even though the construction's terrible, they know it's for a really good purpose because it reduces their risk of flooding in the future. And they were probably one of the worst-hit neighborhoods during Irma.
All right. We have a motion second on the floor. All is in favor, so we're saying aye. Aye, oppose. Motion carries 7-0. Our last item that we added was, as we know, our attorney has been offered a job through the county. Sorry to see him accepting that, but I know that was a hard decision and.
I'm sorry.
We're sorry you're going too. Okay. So, anyway, we're talking about your position, what we may do and I guess you're, I had these printed up while I made the motion. No, what is we have here?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, if I may, I just want to say this council is amazing. You're an amazing group. Three of you were on council when I was hired here. You were a big part of the reason I came to work here because you're a big part of the reason that I think Wes Muller, and I say this as a resident and an observer and someone who was at the county for 10 years before that, is just in such a better place now. And this council, particularly you three, Council, Deputy Mayor Young, Mayor Rose, Councilmember Bentley, who were here through some of the tougher times and really helped turn it around. A lot of that credit, obviously, I think without saying, goes to Mr. Morgan, what he's done here, the team he's built. To the more recent additions to council, just terrific. The city keeps moving up. It's an exciting time. Change is being made. In some ways though, I think you're in an enviable position because right now, even though your leadership is new, you're losing some long-time leadership, you're going to have good, bright, young leaders in place who can serve you well for a long time. So I think Wes Muller is definitely on the rise. I thank you all so much for the opportunity that I've had here to do good work with a good team for the time I've had. But yes, Mayor, I, this opportunity, you know, as I've discussed individually with each of you, it's time for me to take this opportunity. No reflection on Wes Muller. Wes Muller made it very hard to make this decision because this is such a great place because of the team and the people here. I'm still going to live here because it's truly a great place to live. So, but yes, I have to go. So to address your concerns, Mayor, what I've done here, and I'm sorry for the small font, didn't realize when I printed it how small that was going to print out, but I did discuss with Mr. Morgan and Mr. Rhodey a timeline to recruit and put a new city attorney in place. And that's spelled out here. So the plan is to get a formal advertisement out immediately. And I've already begun an informal campaign that will continue. There's a very good network of local government attorneys in Florida to get job openings and opportunities out to, going to be aggressively doing that. So we will advertise the position, put up applications online, work with HR, with the idea of closing the job listing on August 26th. That would be the deadline for submissions. Shortly thereafter, at your September 7 regular council meeting, council would select candidates that council wishes to interview. So you would sort of winnow down the field of applicants and decide which ones you'd like to interview in person. We're proposing a Saturday, September 24 special council meeting. Mayor's shaking his head. Are you on a cruise?
No, I'm at a state on that weekend.
Sorry. Okay, well, we can work with the calendar there, but we're looking at a Saturday special meeting, picking Saturday just to make sure that everyone who's applied readily has the ability to attend. That's exactly the procedure you used during the recruitment that I was a part of. So we'll work on getting a different Saturday date that will work for everybody. But on that date, you'd interview candidates, select a finalist. Then there's a roughly approximately week window for the city manager to oversee a thorough background check, negotiate an employment agreement. And then we had circled a date of October 4th at that city council meeting to approve the employment agreement. That could be pushed a little bit if necessary. Part of my negotiations with the county in going there, and I tried to push out as far as I could joining them, but they are in real need. They're delaying things like hearings and in courts and things like that now so that the future county attorney can take those. So I could not push them beyond September 5th. So whether it's this schedule, whether we adjust some dates, you are going to need some interim help. I've made it clear to the county that I'm going to do everything that I possibly can to help Wes Muller during the transition, but we're going to need to discuss some possibilities. And I'm going to explore those more before your next meeting to get either a person in as an interim, another in-house sort of interim person, or more likely a firm that does local government practice to cover the need. You know, a number of you had asked that I reach out to Paul Googelman and I had a good conversation with Paul today and he was very flattered and thankful for the thought and consideration. He's not at a point in his practice right now where he can take that on those. But he did want me to convey to you all that he really appreciated the fact that many of you did think of him. But I will be exploring other options. Make sure that you're in good hands and as I said, I will, you know, be as available as possible to help during that transition period.
All right. Mr. Frampton?
You're starting there September 5th. Does that mean your last day here is September 2nd? Is that, what, or when's your last day?
My contract expires August 31st. I'm happy to stay through September 2nd or I'll work through that weekend, September 4th. I mean, honestly, I'll be doing things here beyond that. But yeah, Friday, September 2nd could be my last day. Depending on the interim solution we get, that might work out best for them so someone else could start on a Monday.
I'm sure I'd be busy trying to catch up with everything with the county too, so.
I think there's Labor Day also that Monday after that.
You know what? I didn't even realize that on the calendar, so I've got a holiday start date there. But sure, yes, I have no problem if council wishes for me to stay. You know, it's only a few extra days, but at least it's not leaving midweek and.
Councilmember Adams?
I just wanted to acknowledge as someone who's sat in the audience for quite a long time and now up on council that I think you've done a great job as far as being the city attorney for Wes Muller. I think you've really brought a lot of experience, but also challenged as far as legal things to consider. So I wanted to thank you for that. I also wanted to know if it's possible if we reject this timeline? Does that reject you joining? No, no flexibility there?
I am sorry. I did push, believe me, frankly, in the negotiation I had with the county's team, that was really the only point of contention and I tried hard. I tried first for October 1, I tried for September 19. But literally, they have received continuances of hearings that were supposed to be happening this week and could only move them so far, so.
I had to try.
I appreciate it and thank you for the comments.
Mr. McDowell?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm not talking to you no more. No, just congratulations on the job. And you are going to pass the physical and all that stuff. You're not worried about it. It's all going to be okay. It's a done deal. Okay. So we do need to talk about what we're going to do and how we're going to go forward. Is it going to be tonight that we decide that as far as the course of action?
You know, I just wanted to give, I'm sorry, I just wanted to give you a timeline for discussion. This is not set in stone. I'm not asking you to vote on this tonight. I imagined that you'd probably want, given the departure date, some assurances that we do have a process that we are on top of this and we are going to fill this position. So no, you don't have to vote. My suggestion would be if you just by consensus sort of generally approve of this timeline or give an indication that you're in favor of this process at least, what we can do then is, Cynthia, maybe you could help me tomorrow, reach out to council and identify some different dates too that, you know, certainly we want every council member here for this. You now only have two remaining up direct appointments, you know, now with the charter amendment that the police chief falls under the manager. You consent to that one, but it's not a direct. Certainly it's important that all of you are available to be there for the interviews of this candidate.
And I appreciate that, but we do have a timing issue and I think that's why it's left to the council to kind of decide on the course of action. And I appreciate your position of trying to help us through that process. But when I was directing that question at the mayor, because I think that, I'm assuming that he'll take kind of be our point person, at least from a communication perspective going forward, correct?
I would think the city manager would be.
Is that how it, I don't know how it works. That's what I'm looking for, the logistics here is.
In terms of collecting and doing all the information, yeah.
Right. I guess in my mind, I'm very comfortable with a lot of the legwork and those decisions and logistics of if we have a course of action of, you know, I don't have to hear every single step of the way as far as how we get it done. And I'm even questioning whether I even need to be there for an interview if the majority, because time is so critical here, were there, I would be comfortable if, you know, 80% of the council people were there in the interview process.
I think it's pretty important for everybody to be there since we're all in charge. We are the person that hires and fires them. So if it's all possible, we should have all seven of us to make that decision. I think that's kind of critical, just like the, any other key position like the city manager.
Yeah, just selfish reasons because a lot of those dates don't work for me. That's basically what I was looking.
Yeah, I mean, the only date here that pertained to us is the actual interview. Everything else is kind of just a, yeah, there's only one date on here that has our name on there and that's September 24th, which I can't do, but.
Which I can't do either.
We'll figure out a date that works, but.
Fair enough.
I guess my major, my major arrow is pointed towards how are we going to get good applicants or applicants? When we did the police chiefs, it took them weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks behind schedule to even get the brochure out. And I don't know, are we using that same, the same kind of thing or do you have an email list at the website or what's the choices for advertising there?
I have two sort of pre-wired email list. One is local government attorneys in Florida, another one is through FAPA. That's the Florida Association of Police Advisors, a lot of those, a lot of the people in FAPA are like me, we're not exclusively police advisors. We also represent a city. So those two lists are going to include a lot of the universe of viable candidates from in-state. And I've got a short ad ready to go out there. Mr. Morgan and Mr. Rhodey and the incredible Christine Pennington have already given me a lot of input on language for a brochure. So that's ready to go. It's not going to take weeks and weeks for a brochure. We do need just a little time to get the, you know, the design stuff down, but the language is there, it can hit the streets really fast. So that's going out this week.
What about the League of Cities for the state?
Absolutely, yeah.
Is that one you said?
We'll utilize the league, sure.
This is why we love him because he even works on replacing himself. This is great, okay.
Well, you are sending me to a municipal attorneys conference in a couple of weeks as well. And, you know, I know the tendency might be, why are we sending you to this conference when you're on the way out the door? But for one thing, I hope and intend to still contribute to the city in every way possible, but also it's going to be a great opportunity for me to market Wes Muller because unlike, unlike sometimes when there's a departure, mid-career, that's not a retirement, you know, sometimes it's not the best situation. One or both parties may be unhappy. In this case, I have nothing but good things to say about Wes Muller and, you know, I can be one of the biggest advocates to sell the city and the job to potential candidates. So, and I'm already working my network out there as well. So I'm confident we'll get you good and qualified candidates in a reasonable amount of time.
Mr. Dittmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Morse, what's your conference?
Morse, when's your conference? What week is that?
Not this Friday, but the following Friday.
29th?
Yes.
So I'm looking at this, and so you'll, you'll have a plenty of opportunity to meet with some people. I'm, I know you want to be talking about printing out brochures and sending stuff out. I, I mean, most everything's done by email anyways these days. You know, what, what are we going to mail the brochures to, or what are we going to send them, but?
Yeah, it's, it won't be a print item. It's just a digital.
Here's, if we could, and I'm just proposing this, I mean, I'm thinking, cutting this down from, right now, you're looking at five weeks from now to submit for your applications. I mean, we could always extend it out, but maybe we could try to shorten that to three weeks and see what we get. And we can always extend it if we have to. I mean, I don't know, I mean, if there's a way to do that, but. And then maybe we have a meeting scheduled on the, I think it's, are we, are we meeting in our second, on the 16th of August? Is that still going?
Yeah, one meeting in August. I think it's the 9th or so.
No, 9th is, that's the week we're going to, or is that the week that we're going?
Same week, yeah.
So we don't have any meetings scheduled after that?
No, until September.
Is everyone going to be here in August? Is everyone going to be here in August? I know people are not going to be here in September. Is everyone going to be here? Because I, I know September 24th doesn't work, and maybe we can move some of this up and do something in August. I mean, I'm not trying to fast-track it, but I am. Because you know what? We're not going to have someone here. Whereas you'll be at the county, they have a whole slew of attorneys. There's not going to be anybody here after, after the 2nd, so.
We're going to have somebody here.
Well.
We don't want to make a bad decision by rushing, but.
I don't, I'm not, I'm not saying we, we make a bad decision. I'm just saying that is if we come across someone, I don't want to have an artificial delay in here because we're, we're waiting for this date to close. So I, I'd say that if we can move that up, we can, we might. And if we don't, and we say, hey, look, we're not having any luck. So can we give flexibility on that and say, we're going to close it here, but if it's looking at, maybe we can change it. I don't know. Because people might, still might say, I missed that. Maybe I'll call and find out what's going on, or you can extend it online. I, I know there's a way to actually do this. But, you know, if we could move this, this timeline up from October 4th to, to, to September, mid-September, probably at the latest, I think it'd be better for us. But, and then I think we have, most of August is open if we only have the one meeting scheduled. So I think it'd be an opportunity for us to, to interview our candidates if we could find somebody. If we close this out like maybe on the 10th, maybe we could get moved forward. But that gives us a good three weeks to, to, before we actually, for the end of the month's out. So I'm just throwing it out there. So let me ask you, what, what's, you look like you have a look of concern on your face. Is it?
That would be a really short window for candidates to get the word, decide, you know, there's a due diligence period that they're going to want to do before they submit. I think August 10th is, was that what you suggested for?
I'm just throwing it out, three weeks, yeah, three weeks from tomorrow.
Might be a little.
We're not here August 10th, right?
We wouldn't need to, we wouldn't need to be here. That's when it would close out. The, the application period would close out, yeah. Or close it out maybe the.
I think that's enough time.
Maybe the 17th?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, just move, move it back a little bit. I mean, yeah, I mean, just to give us some more time. I mean, I'm just thinking about.
It is possible to extend the deadline for submission, of course, but, but you're also pretty soon going to be selecting dates that follow in order to that. So there'd be sort of a domino effect of having to change other dates if, if you did have to extend the deadline for submission.
Well, I mean, we follow this timeline and we, I mean, what are you suggesting? I mean, there's not, is there a temp agency that's going to send us an attorney?
Actually, there, there are a number of quality local government law firms in central Florida that do full-service representation for a number of cities. You know, I've discussed with each of you individually your preferences and, and my senses that, that all of you fairly strongly prefer the in-house model. That said, firms can provide good service, and there are local firms that can do it. And, you know, I could get someone in here who's not a temp agency or just a placeholder, good attorney who can do the work you need to have done. In, in fact, in talking with Mr. Googelman, he said, you know, I couldn't do it, but someone from my law firm, Wyserota, could do it. There are a number of other firms that do that sort of work. And I would suggest, again, utilizing their services or potentially, if I could identify a, a good candidate for just an interim who may not be interested in the job long-term but willing to do it for a period of time.
That was just for discussion for me. I, you know, if we can find someone, get someone, an interim that actually sit here, then.
We'll, we'll get you service. And I think, I think getting it right, you know, it, it is more important than getting it fast. And you're right, there's a chance you get it both. But I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't risk not getting it right at the expense of trying to fill the seat, you know, as quickly as humanly possible. So I think you, you leave time for the process to play out in the most, best and most productive way long-term is my, my suggestion, my advice to you.
I mean, I'm, I'm just concerned. I mean, we're, we're going to have RPOs that are going to need done, things like that. I mean.
We'll, we'll handle that. All, all of that will be taken care of one way or another. If we bring in a firm that, for example, says we don't do RPOs, then I'll work with, you know, Laura Moody at the sheriff, or I'll do an RPO. I, you know, I, we can handle that.
We'll drop it off at your house. No problem.
You got it. Send Tony Romano over with the, yeah, with the file and.
We know where you're at.
And just, Mr. Frampton's next, but just a, an FYI. Also, Melbourne is losing their head attorney, I understand. So there might be more than one advertisement out there, so. Mr. Frampton?
Thank you, Mayor. It was going to be my question about contracting services and covering it with that. So that being said, I'm much more inclined to go with the contracted services and get the right person for the job rather than trying to push the timeline forward. So, yeah, if you can do that research and find out a good firm that can handle those contracted services, or if we can either sub out pieces so the transition is a little bit less hectic, then that would be great too. So I'm, I'm really in favor of the contracted services. Thank you.
Councilmember Adams?
I think in terms of, you know, Mr. Richardson knows what the city needs. He's served in that seat. So if this is the timeline he's giving us that he feels is going to give us that best candidate and that best time to review it, I would prefer not moving things up just to make sure that we're getting all of the candidates that, that are applying in order to make that best decision. Obviously, if, if that 24th doesn't work for the majority of council or for, for everyone on council, because I do think it's important that everyone's there, then I'd rather see that, you know, moved a day or two or, or three later rather than trying to, to move it up if Mr. Richardson feels like this is the best timeline for us.
Yeah, that, I think the deadline for submission of applicants is important. I think if you move back that interview date, that would be fine a little bit to get it. And there are things you can do with technology that seven years ago we weren't doing, right? So if a council member had to appear by Zoom or something like that and was able to, that might be an option. But in addition to the importance of the seven of you interviewing those candidates, as someone who's been a candidate, very important for the candidate too, because in some sense, they're interviewing you. It's important for, for them to make sure that they're a good fit for the whole. So I, I would strongly recommend that you, you pick a date that's going to work for everyone on council.
No, I think, I think we're good. And Cynthia, we'll try to get our schedules and good luck with that. And, but no, I think it's, it's a good start, and we appreciate you going the extra mile to, to recruit and help us out. So, since you live in the city. Very good. All right. That concludes the action agenda. Next, we have city council reports. Councilmember Pat Bentley, I believe, is first.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one comment. I have a meeting set up with Randy Fein tomorrow to discuss a future project funding in Westbrook. It'll be a second project that we've done in Westbrook to try to alleviate the funding. We're looking at about 900K total for the project, and, and I think we're looking to get on the order of 725K or so from, from Mr. Fein's bucket. And, and then we have 180K matching funds that, that West Melbourne's putting in. So that's the only comment, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Deputy Mayor Young.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I just have a couple of things. I wanted to thank the chief and also city manager for having the traffic speed control wagon out on Wingate. As long as it was, it was there for a long time, and it made a, quite a difference. I got many comments on it. And again, as I've said before, it got my attention every time I turned around, took my fit foot off of the accelerator. So I know it did for others as well. Was, I don't know if there was a final report when it was finally taken down, if there was a final readout, but if there was, if I could have a copy of that, then I can report back to my entire subdivision, you know, what the findings were. And it certainly would be nice to have something ongoing, maybe something that was solar-powered or something that.
Yes. As you can report to your neighborhood, we're proposing in the budget to put a, a fixed one of those there so that frees up the trailer for other locations. So we have put that in the proposed budget for next year so you can let your neighborhood know that that would become a fixed one that frees up the trailer for other locations.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Are you doing that on Henry as well, or just there?
We budgeted a single one so that we could put the trailer on Henry as needed. We do have five crosswalk enhancements on Henry budgeted as, as per the council discussion.
It seemed like it'd be good for Wingate too, for this, some enhancements when they cross the street. I know you got some busy intersection there, or whatever. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. I haven't heard anything about National Night Out. Are we doing National Night Out?
There was an email that was sent out as an invite to all the council members, so.
Maybe I need to check my email better.
Yeah, it's okay. I'll, I'll make sure you get another, another invite.
Do we get any subdivisions that are interested yet?
Yes. So we're in the process of formalizing that with all the subdivisions. Greg Aaron Staff is basically going through and contacting all, all people on the list. And then, Pat, I think you're, you're, have you been notified? Okay.
Yeah, I've already sent it back.
So I think that it's pretty much done. We just have to finalize it. And you should be getting something, probably by the end of this week, I'm thinking.
All right. Thank you very much. And while you're up there, because I wanted to ask you something anyway. We've been getting the, the text messages when things go out, when things are happening. So thank you very much for keeping those coming. Lots of things are going on. But there was a comment about the cameras. Some things were picked up on our flock cameras and things. And, and we're able, so that last time when, when you reported, you said that those are being very successful at the hotel, that sort of thing. And the flocks, the flock cameras are continuing to do their job and.
Absolutely. And, and more importantly, what's interesting about the flock camera system is we're, we're able to trace back on a lot of crimes that had occurred and capture the, the path of the criminals that are fleeing from different scenes. So we use them a lot. And it's, and during my crime meetings, the detectives are always, I always ask them, did you, as, almost like as a joke, did you go, I look at the flock cameras, and they do. So that's part of, anytime we have a, a vehicle that flees a scene, or we have a description of a vehicle, they automatically put that in there. So it's been working out very well. Tony Romano will probably be, be here one day talking to everyone, because I'm not going to be, to ask you for more flock cameras and, and because they have been very successful.
All right. Thank you very, very much.
You're welcome.
All right. On the, on the 27th, there's an MPO meeting in Gainesville. It's the 27th and 28th. So I'll be going to the MPO meeting. It's an overnight meeting in Gainesville. I have to figure out where Gainesville is. On August 22nd, there's another overnight trip, and that is to Deland. So I have a, a TDC meeting earlier in the day, and then I'll be going to Deland. And again, I'll figure out what that is. I'll just put it in my GPS thing. My exciting news for the day was I went to the county commission meeting this morning, and it was my honor to acknowledge, to receive the acknowledgement from the county commission for the amateur radio operators during the 22, 2022 Atlantic Hurricane season. Ham radio operators, emergency response operators are very important to our entire community. So I was very happy to do that for them, because I'm a ham. So that's why they asked me. Also, I wanted to let you know that there is a, a new Health First Medical Center facility being built. It's a $500 million investment, and it's bringing in 1,000 jobs for this as well. So that was kind of nice. County, county passed that. Also, wanted to let you know that there is a convention center coming to Cocoa Beach. The two hotels that are there, the International and there's another one. So those will be torn down, and a, a convention center will be built. And so that's coming as well. So we have lots of good things to look forward to. And then the last thing that I went there for today was I was able to see Mr. Richardson be voted in by the, by the commission. They are so happy to have them. And they're, they're just giggling with glee over the fact that they have him. So it was kind of like a neener, neener, neener. So I told him, and, and so he's going, he's gonna, he absolutely deserves to sit in that seat. He's, he certainly earned it, and, and he deserves it. So I wish him all the best. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams, you're, you're not next, you're after, after Mr. McDowell.
It's okay, I'm ready.
You were so ready.
I'm still trying to figure out the city clerk is going to spell neener, neener. But anyway, I'm not getting to go to Deland, but I heard I might be going to Walmart after this. But anyway, I have, about a year ago, I was involved with the Chamber of Commerce, the Florida Chamber of Commerce, and the Melbourne City Commerce to look at the prosperity, the generational poverty initiative. That's the, trying to teach or have the businesses and the community leaders engaged in, with the school systems to help get literacy up in the third grade level. So that way, it's proven over history that, that, that will help them advance and increase their chances of graduating and not have some difficulty with incarceration and things like that. That can happen to them because there's a higher percentage of chance of that happening if they didn't graduate. All those factors come into play. And part of this is that I'm the ambassador of the Children's Home Society, and we obviously have a limited amount of schools in West Melbourne. So my task was to help the Children's Home Society to help identify other areas. And we've been looking at the Endeavor School in Cocoa for the last year, that model, and we're looking, we'll be there tomorrow again. But we are looking at somewhere in the, probably in the Palm Bay area. And I did go to the city council and bring this opportunity to them several months ago. And they are receptive to looking at that. I just want to kind of bring this council up to, what's Dan doing over there? That's what, that's all about. Okay. So as far as, that's part of the Florida Chamber of Commerce on the Poverty to Prosperity Project. On the, I attended the Aging Commission, which, thank you, Deputy Mayor can appoint me in that direction. It's not an assigned seat. It's through the League of Cities. There is an assigned person, which I believe is Councilwoman Minus from Melbourne. And a lot of emphasis, a lot of emphasis on, on the fact that aging community and housing for that community is starting to get just as difficult or even harder because of their fixed incomes that they're experiencing in this town with housing, not being able to afford where they're living. So they're doing a, a lot of good work in that area. And I just wanted to emphasize, and I know that there's been a lot of discussion lately about that. And I believe even in the charter that is going to be recommended on Thursday of this week is going to be language about how the county is going to address that. And I talked to Mr. Morgan at length, I'd nauseam sometimes, about the seniors and, and affordable housing in that regard. Because we are going to experience a lot of growth in that area in the next 20 years. They're anticipating almost double the amount of seniors will be around. And then finally, is, I wanted to mention that the Marine Resource Council is having their second conference on the low-impact development. And I did also attend the Florida Institute of Technology on the recycling, which is very alarming because we have, as I can say here in Houston, we have problems. Because we really are experiencing difficulty with recycling in this country. It's not an issue here. It's systemic. And recycling is, we're only doing a partial of recycling. Most of the stuff that we. only doing a partial of recycling. Most of the stuff that we have been sending to be recycled actually ends up in the landfill or is incinerated somewhere. And I just need, you know, a lot of red flags are going up on that. We need to get in front of that, because that's a huge problem if we don't get the recycling component figured out. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
I was still ready, so thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
So I was excited upon an appointment to be able to jump right in, and I had said that during my interview. And I feel like about a month since, you know, now being on council, that's what I've done exactly, was jumping right in. I won't read to you the list. I've been keeping track of just things that I've been trying to do in terms of the city responsibilities. But the highlights would be, I did tour the recycling center at the north end of the county with our assistant city manager, Mr. Rhodey. We had a great time. I won't, I do echo what Mr. McDowell said in terms of some recycling concerns from the city, but then nationwide, just some interesting things that I've learned that I'll eventually be writing up in an email to share with you, because I think it's important information to know. I was able to meet with almost all of the city departments, just spend some time understanding their current needs, their future needs, as we talk about the future of the city. So that was a really good opportunity, including a daytime ride along with the police department. So thank you, Chief, for setting that up. I was excited about that opportunity to just understand more in terms of the police department within our city. I think with all the recent time spent with staff, I did want to note that I can confidently say West Melbourne has the best staff in Brevard County. They're definitely knowledgeable, capable. It was a real pleasure to be able to really sit down one-on-one with the different department heads. Something that I was going to bring up during the budget workshop, which obviously we didn't have today, so I just kind of wanted to share it for the betterment of council. But we had received an email earlier today from the president of the Field of Dreams Advisory Board echoing just their concerns for the need for a position within the park that would work on special needs programming and things like that. I know that was something that was discussed at a previous council meeting, and council ultimately decided to move in another direction with that, with like a six-month timeline. However, it's my understanding that position has still not been filled. And there was discussion during that time of the board was not willing to offer any additional funds to supplement that position. As of that email, their position has changed, and they're willing to put forward 15K each year, I think for three years, was what the email had said. So I think that's just, you know, I'm sharing that in terms of seeing if that's something council wants to consider, because they've changed what they were thinking. And that's the end of that report.
Thank you. Councilmember Frampton?
Thank you, Mayor. I thought we did move forward, Mr. Morgan, with the Field of Dreams changeover to, so that they can coordinate those programs, correct?
Yes, the council approved a position focused on special populations with the report back to show success or not in attracting additional special needs activities at the park. And so that was our commitment to the council and...
And we had two people that we wanted for that job, right?
Yeah, we had two applicants at the time, and I think we re-advertised with that special population focus. I think we've had at least one interview since.
Yeah, that's correct. So that was re-advertised. The two that we had identified prior fell through, so we've re-advertised with the new position. We had an interview yesterday. We have another one scheduled tomorrow. We're trying to conduct those this week. So hopefully we'll be filling that in the next couple of weeks.
Apparently, you can raise their salary by $15,000, too.
We can dedicate them to him?
I believe that's why they dropped out, because the responsibility was the same as watching the skaters.
Right.
Seriously, I mean, we can laugh, but that's...
So do you have a couple candidates now?
We did conduct an interview yesterday, and we have another one scheduled for tomorrow. We've reached out to a third candidate that looked...
And that position will handle special needs events, like, okay, great, okay.
Yeah. It's designed for, it's a coordinator position, so it would be trying to drive more activity and more...
That's what I thought. I thought that's the direction we went into. So Chief, thanks to your department. I know the other day, we had an incident at Sawgrass, and it initially got reported as four teens running through, shooting people with pellet guns, and then possibly abducting two other teens in the car at gunpoint. But it turned out through great investigation on the chief's guys' parts, that it was a TikTok challenge, and they were using these OrbiGel things, shooting people with them, and they picked up two people they knew. And then they, as they were exiting the development, they, the kids got scared and, I guess, got out of the vehicle. And the four teens that came in were all charged. And you got, you guys did a great job. And I guess we just should say the importance to all the communities is immediately call PD and get them rolling out there. That way, because they caught them before they left the community, and everything was solved and...
They even shot a dog.
Yeah. That's stepping over the line. The kids and the father that got shot, you know, but the dog was what pushed it.
So there is advantage to having one entrance, because you can stop them so they can't leave, so.
Exactly. So anyhow, thanks, Chief. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Dittmore?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to talk real briefly. This, I think it was this past week, we got an email from Mr. Morgan regarding an incident or a complaint that we had on the reused water system. He was responding to a complaint. I actually was out there when the Jacobs responded out there. It was actually my neighbor that actually wrote this in. And I actually was there when all this, their investigation took place. So I explained to him what was going on. Basically, the city did a, we did a follow-up on the complaint, basically after the rainy season started here. So when that usually happens, we usually don't have issues with the reused water. So I'm not going to go into a lot of detail tonight, but I think we need to, and I'll try to work with staff on this going forward, is to come up with a better policy on, you know, especially with the lines that are broken. We have a lot of absentee owners with rental properties that aren't maintaining their systems, rather than dropping off these notes and, you know, going back 10 days later. I think in certain circumstances, it's going to behoove us to shut the water off, the reused water, especially if a line is broken and bleeding out the water and affecting the other users. To my neighbors, to defend my neighbor on this, his complaint was is that we had no water pressure, and there was no water pressure at all, and being charged for this. And then you go into some of the other neighbors, and another neighbor knocked on my door and had 20-plus videos on his phone showing where people are watering in another adjacent neighborhood that weren't supposed to be doing it, because there's no way we could shut that water off. So I think it's incumbent upon the city to enforce its own rules, and we need to have rules that provide that service. If we're going to charge a monthly fee, and I think it's $14 a month now, does that sound right? We're charging $14 a month for this service. If that whole month, no one has water pressure, and there's no recourse for them to, you know, offer them a refund or something, we need to, we need to change this so it's right. Either we enforce what we have, maintain the system properly, enforce the rules that we have, so that people get the service that we're charging for, or we figure another way to do it. But I think, so I'll work with staff on this to try to come up with something in the next couple of months, so in the next drought or non-rainy season, whatever, we hit next spring or whatever. And so we'll have something a little bit better, because right now, the system that we have just isn't working, and it's not working for a lot of people. I know everybody's on different hours. I think some of these communities have these odd and even things, and I think it's probably going to make it worse. But I'll work on that to get that, to bring something back to you guys, and we'll get something a little bit better than what we have. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I know we haven't had that many meetings recently, and we only have one next month. So, and I think that city managers have one more meeting, as does the city attorney, correct? You both just have one more meeting left, so, yeah, for now. So yeah, there's a lot of changes. Been kind of busy in between meetings. Went to the legislative update, where these, our senators and our representatives told us all the good things they were doing, and they did around the state. Also, had a great, I thought the Space Coast League of Cities did a great presentation. They had one of their lobbyists up there that represents us at the city level, and gave a good overview of what's passed. And probably a lot of those that didn't pass will come back in a different shape and form, so be aware of all those kind of things. A couple other notes is, Mr. Richardson, the flags on 192 look real good, the Halloween flags, the orange color. I know...
I would direct your attention to the logo on the wall behind you, which inspired the color scheme. Not the Miami Dolphins, as I have been accused of because of my fanhood, but...
But I did get some comments on those, so it looks real good. I know you're talking about the sun and the, with the same color as all the background, so...
Is it the sun?
I was like orange or something else.
Yeah, an orange sun.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. McDowell was talking about schools, and the school of grades came out. I guess West Melbourne schools had kind of like the alphabet. We had A schools, we had B schools, we had C schools, and unfortunately, we still have a D school. So, not good, but...
D school.
Can you imagine?
I can't imagine.
You can't imagine. So hopefully, we can help them out if necessary. And I'm still getting interesting calls from Sawgrass. The people are concerned about both lanes on the left turning, both northern lanes turning left. They kind of wonder why the middle lane doesn't go left and straight.
And I just say that coming here tonight to this meeting, the intersection was blocked, and I was in the far-left lane, and I had to scoot around the car, but the middle lane couldn't get through, couldn't go straight, couldn't do anything. So the lane was blocked.
And what does that mean? I don't know.
It means that we need better traffic control there, I think. If the, if the lane wasn't blocked, if the people didn't back up into the middle of the intersection, I think either way would work. So maybe we need to have PD over there or something and start writing some tickets. I don't know.
That's not the answer to all that, but it just, again, what I see sometimes is the right lane, when somebody, the right lane is to go straight and right. So when the first car is going straight, I see it backing up there. Again, I don't see it that much. Yeah, and...
In the evening, just in the evening.
Well, we haven't had school during this time, so it's just something to be aware of. I mean, you know, you live there, so, again, I guess we can evaluate the middle lane going left and straight. I don't, because the lights don't work both directions, correct? It's just people leaving your development. That's the only light that's on at that time. So I'm having trouble figuring out why, what would slow things down, the middle lane going straight or left. There's...
It's a county issue, and Mr. Rhodey's been working on that.
Okay. All right. Long as, I am sure you're aware. At Splashpad, I know it's supposed to open up in June, and here it is, almost August. Where are we with that? The anticipated folder of answers and questions.
So since the last meeting, the flooring has gone in. The canopy shade structures are in and complete. The vortex, the Splashpad main control board was replaced. When they were getting ready to calibrate that, they found a valve that needed to be replaced that was previously unknown, and so they, they didn't realize it needed to be replaced. And so that has since been replaced as of this past weekend. The last piece of this is the UV ultraviolet sanitation, the filtration system for that. And they came on site to inspect and calibrate that before startup, and they found some other parts that needed to be replaced that were damaged, that, again, they didn't know about prior. So those, the purchase order's been submitted, that we've placed that order a week or so ago, so they're waiting on the parts. Mr. Boeprin's been in constant contact with that company. So hopefully, they'll be, they'll have the parts this week. Hopefully, within the next week or two, they'll be on-site to put those in. Last piece of that is the health inspection. And so he's been in constant communication with the health inspector, the health department for that as well. So he's got people on speed dial. He's constantly trying to push them to get the parts in. But unfortunately, there were a couple of pieces that needed some parts that they previously didn't know were, had failed. So we're getting close. I wish I had a specific date for you, but I don't, I can't tell you exactly the date that it's going to start up.
Is this the company we're using out of Canada, and we have to go there to get the parts?
No, sir. No, sir. Well, one of them is, the parts come from Canada for the Splashpad, but the contractor's actually out of Port St. Lucie that's doing the install for both the UV and the Splashpad controller parts. Both of those, two separate contractors, both based out of Port St. Lucie.
Any other updates on the park itself?
I think the big update were the parts for the Splashpad and the interviews occurring for the position. We are also, while that position was unfilled, we've taken the opportunity to clean, you know, clean and wax the floors. We're cleaning the roof for the Field of Dreams as well. So on one side, there's, it's fairly dirty. On the other side, it's not. I don't, I'm not sure why that occurred, but...
That's the north side, so it doesn't get any sun.
We have the pressure washing company coming out to do that. They were, they were supposed to be there this afternoon. I'm not sure. I didn't get an update on that yet. But they were supposed to be there today. If not, then probably tomorrow. We're putting, we're setting up that office for two positions. So both coordinators will have a desk in that location where they previously, it was set up for one. But we're going to actually have it so that both coordinators can work together. The one that's currently almost entirely, you know, stationed here, she'll go back and forth. So she'll have an office there to be able to work with this new coordinator. And then also, if there are events here, she'll be able to come back here and coordinate here as well. So setting that up a little bit differently, so we're taking that opportunity to rearrange that office space and clean things up.
So that's not a new position. That's just moving the body over there.
That's correct. So one coordinator position already exists for project coordinator, and then the special populations coordinator is the position that we're trying to fill right now.
I got you. All right. Very good. Thank you. And the workshop that we didn't have to talk about, the council chambers and building department and the second floors, are we going to have that?
That's on the calendar for September 7 at 5:30, I believe. Is that right, Mr. Rhodey?
So next council meeting is the budget, is the budget, or is the CD, CRA, thank you. Next budget is the CRA, and then the meeting after that will reconvene that meeting that we were supposed to have this week.
Okay. Same night as the budget hearing?
Yes. Same night, but yeah, the budget hearing won't interfere with...
All right. Thank you. All right. Any question for city manager?
When's the party?
August 31st. All right. Seeing nothing on the agenda. This meeting is adjourned, 9:54.